Okay Marina, just let the records reflect that there was a vote among the PZBA members. And I'll just continue with the meeting today, notwithstanding the technical difficulties that we've experienced. Okay?
Okay.
Justin, you're gonna chair the meeting, or do you want somebody here to do it?
Um, I'll try doing what I can. Um, so, John, I sent you a couple documents. Were you able to get any of those?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Um, well, let's go ahead then. The majority of the board wanted to continue. Let's go ahead and I'll make a motion to open the regular meeting.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, um, so for anyone who just joined us, we, uh, we've been having lots of technical difficulties, um, this evening. We're trying to get things improved. And we were not able to hold our workshop at, um, six o'clock due to technical difficulties. Um, so, but first things first, we're meeting in a hybrid format. We, some people are present at Village Hall, others are meeting virtually. For people that wish to attend virtually over the internet, they're, the meeting links are published on the Village website. For anyone that would like to attend, um, and they will be able to hear audio and witness, uh, some video of the meeting. Uh, but video is apparently extremely limited at this time due to technical difficulties. Uh, with that said, let's move on to the conflicts of interest disclosure. Uh, we have, um, a concept discussion for 75 Monroe on the agenda. Um, my understanding is that's just a presentation with no, no voting by the board, but I have, um, I will be, um, I've recused myself from other matters of 75 Monroe due to comments and opinions that I made before being joining this board. Uh, so I've recused myself for all other, um, 75 Monroe, um, topics on our agendas, so I will continue recusing myself tonight. Um, I think Mike Reynolds was on here before, I, who is an alternate. I don't know if he is going to be able to rejoin. Uh, but I think he would want to disclose anything as well. Uh, does any other members of the board need to disclose any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
No, Susan Loda, no?
No, Dave Marshall.
Justin, is that just for 75 Monroe or for all the matters before the board tonight?
I am just recusing myself for 75 Monroe. Uh, for the other, um, matters before the board, I have no conflicts of interest to disclose.
Nor do I, Dave Marshall.
Nor do I, Susan Loda.
I have no conflicts, Joanne Shannon.
None, John Katuren.
Okay, the, um, other matter is we had a published public hearing notice for 50 State Street for food truck variances. And the application is, um, withdrawn as my understanding, as the application for the variance was not proper. And the applicant, I believe, has made other arrangements and has voluntarily withdrawn their application as well. Um, so, Mindy, do we need to open the public hearing for that and accept comments anyway, and then just adjourn it?
No, the, the application's been withdrawn. There's nothing to hear.
Okay, um, so 50 State Street food truck variances will be stricken from the agenda. Um, alright, uh, the, uh, first three matters here, we had 72 State Street, 24 Monroe Avenue, and 42 Monroe Avenue. All of them were before us for site plans. And just before we get into hearing everything from the applicant, I was hoping to go over some of this in the workshop session, but I had a lot of concerns about the completeness of applications. Um, are we able to present anything? Uh, can I present a document at all? Do a screen share?
Um, well, you, you do it once we open the public meeting, meeting for each of those applications. Um, and then invite members of the public who are here, um, to come up and observe it on, on Mr. Keating's computer, once he has it up and running.
Okay, maybe that's not gonna work, because I was hoping then. Um, I guess, let's go, I think it makes the most sense then to go ahead and go forward, or I guess effectively skipping our workshop. We can hear from each applicant what their proposal is and, um, get public comments, and then we can start discussion on the board. Uh, so the first one on the agenda was 72 State Street. Um, is the applicant here tonight?
Yes.
Or the representative?
Do you like Cooper?
I believe Dave Burrows. I see it on here.
Thank you, Dan.
Uh, I am on, uh, but I believe Shannon Hookway will be presented.
I'm here.
Good.
Okay, so, I apologize for our various technical difficulties we're having this evening. Um, we're trying to get back on track here. It sounds like things are running better now. Um, so, let's, let's just go ahead and start by, what I'd like to hear is, um, to have each applicant start, just give us a general overview of what your application is. And, uh, board will hear any public comments, and then the board members may have a few questions, uh, for each applicant. But if you can just go ahead and, to go ahead and start, please, with just a basic overview for the-
Uh, so if Shannon could go ahead, I will kind of fill in the blanks once she describes her, uh, project in general and the reason for, uh, the variance.
Thank you, David. Yeah, I'm not sure that they're in need of a variance, but, um,
Oh.
Find out more.
Sure, and let me, let me clarify, I'm sorry. Uh, the only thing that is not in compliance is the height of the proposed garage. Uh, as far as the site plan itself goes, it will be in compliance.
I made a ruling on the height restriction. This is Steve, the building inspector, code officer, through there.
So, okay, cool.
We'll, we'll discuss the height, but can we start by hearing an overview from the applicant, please? Thank you.
So, I'm Shannon Hookway. I live at 72 State Street. Um, I've lived in the Village for almost 30 years and never had a garage. And after getting three daughters through college, this is the year of the garage, so. Um, I am proposing to build a garage on my lot, detached garage. Um, I did bring some sort of, uh, more consolidated packets. I know everything, everything on the, um, website seemed like not a lot of information, because it gets updated. Um, so we're proposing to build an 18 Y by 22 deep detached garage, um, at the base of my drive, which is a very large, uh, paved driveway, and, uh, so the perfect ideal spot for that structure. Um, I am an artist, um, in a home that needs more storage, so, um, I'm looking to do a second story that I could actually still be into some artwork. Hopefully so, spread out there. Um, David is, uh, an architect who's done quite a bit in the Village of Pittsburgh, and so I retain his service life. I feel such a very thorough, wonderful job. Hmm. Is there anything more that? Share?
So, uh, so just some clarity for you. Um, what we're interested in taking a look at here and hearing from the public, and a big part of our review is we want to understand the impact of the proposal. We like hearing input from the public, so sometimes neighbors have various concerns or issues they would, uh, like us to bring up. Um, so, they, you know, the reasons for you wanting to do what you want to do aren't necessarily, um, I mean, we always like hearing some of that, but that's not the most critical thing. So, uh, the typical things we look at is how this would impact other properties, um, and whether there are any other potential impacts of this, uh, that could be adverse to, you know, health, safety, or general welfare. So that's kind of what we're looking at here. Um, there is a, a late, and this is kind of true for all the applicants. I believe, uh, this will be reviewed by the Architectural Review Board in a subsequent meeting. And they're primarily going to be looking at the architectural, uh, materials, what this looks like. And, um, the typical things that we look at are things like, um, lighting, drainage, landscaping, uh, noise concerns, and things like that. Um, so basically, other things that can, uh, be impactful across the, um, the, the property line.
Okay, so most directly, um, I, my direct neighbor, uh, is Art Pierce, who may be on the line. He had, uh, prior engagements, I'm not sure if he is. Um, he's told me yet today, you know, to let, you know, that he is, he's supporting me in this. He's had, I consulted him about the project. Um, we have discussed, um, how far from our shared property line that this should be. I think in our proposal, um, we have the three feet, um, which is required. But if it's more comfortable moving it to five feet, I'm open to doing that. It's not gonna impact, um, the project greatly. Um, we've discussed the drainage. It's listed, um, in the paperwork, but all the drainage will go, uh, north east and away from his property and towards the back of our lot, which is, um, sort of, here's little, uh, you know, ghost of arms. There's no, uh, no neighbor in the back of our property. Uh, my neighbor to the east is, uh, extremely far from my property. Um, it's a new car rental. Um, I'm sure they were, informed of this. I don't think, uh, it would impact them really, even looking at a, another beautiful structure on the property. Um, as far as light, uh, we did list the lights that would be, you know, on the front of the garage. Um, it would stay within the requirements of the 60 watts. Um, yeah, I'm not sure who else it may impact. Um,
Well, um, this is David Burrows, architect. I think I'll fill in a few blanks. Um, I hope that you have the correct site plan. This one lists the, uh, lot coverage with, uh, on the top right of the page, building areas for the house area, porch is brick walkway, driveway, garage in the total. Uh, and that would indicate that the total lot coverage is less than the maximum allowable, so we're, we're complying with lot coverage. Uh, we're complying with setbacks. Um, and we also, on the same plan, describe the lighting and the drainage. Um, Sharon did mention, or Shannon did mention that the drainage stays on her lot, drains downhill towards the north. Uh, the lights are a single fixture over the overhead door, which is required by code, and then the side entrance light, they're both low wattage. Um, and, uh, if you have the correct plan, all that is described on that plan.
Mr. Burrows, can you tell us the date of the correct plan?
Uh, actually, Steve should have that. Uh, unfortunately, I redated it today. I didn't work on it today. I don't have the date of the set that I sent. I would say somewhere around the 13th.
Well, I can, I, I printed on, I'll be updated those weeks, so you guys can probably, uh, for these.
That would be great. We'll need a set for, um, the recording.
Sure. That should be the most recent.
So, the one in the meeting packet is dated, um, August 13th of 2021.
It's about a month old.
And, um, that's what was in here. Um, so our submission deadline for revised materials was last Friday morning. Um, so what was, uh, I don't have the date for that, but, um, that was the 10th. Um, so, so as of the 10th, whatever we had at that time went up, was on the Village website and distributed to the, uh, board members. Um, so that's where we're at. Um, but, and now, I also, I don't believe any of the information in my meeting packet was stamped what they received date by the Village. At least one of the things I've seen so far.
Uh, maybe Steve could make sure that the most current drawings are in the board member's hands.
I just, I'm just sure to print out that I, I did before the meeting. Basically, taking every-
Excuse me, this is our tourist, uh, as an opportunity for me to speak while you're working through your, uh, the technicalities of paperwork. Well, we'll, um, we'll open the public hearing shortly. Um, you're the neighbor, so your comments will be much appreciated. So if you just hold on a couple minutes here. Um, Very good, thank you. Okay, so anyway, um, let's, we'll get back to the drawings later. Um, let me just ask a, a, just a couple clarifying questions to the presentation we had thus far. Um, the, uh, this proposed garage is listed as three feet from the property line, which was something that I had some concerns about. Um, I believe that's legal. As long as it's legal, that's fine. Um, but I did want to ask about how that would impact things. I heard that the slope of the property, you said it is pitched to the north, uh, which would be, um, away from the garage. It is not pitched towards the adjacent property. Is that correct?
Right.
So is it pitched away from the adjacent property?
The kitchen is, does go away from the adjacent property, correct?
Okay, thank you. That's an important clarification. Another question is, are you digging down, digging and bringing heavy equipment in there? Um, the reason I ask is if you're doing that in proximity to the neighbor's yard, that can impact their trees and other, um, landscaping there, if it's in, if they're in close proximity to the property.
Uh, yes, I've discussed this with, with Art, um, and the contractor. Most, the equipment will all be on my property. Um, you do have, sort of, as you can see in the picture, the shared driveway, um, and there are two trees that we sort of share. Uh, not quite positive property line, or it's pretty much right down the middle, I believe. Uh, we've discussed that too, and we've, uh, I've consulted, um, some tree experts and things about how, how would we work for that to, um, do I do diligence for those systems? My yard is surrounded by trees, so that's, uh, something I looked into prior to, even starting this process.
Okay, so you've, um, so there are trees in the neighborhood and you are excavating, and you are working to develop a plan that is amenable to the neighbor to address that. Um, I believe when we've looked at this in the past, some things that were effective are putting down a thick layer of mulch around the trees. I think what we had some input from someone that put down a foot thick layer of mulch around the root area, and also put a fence around the tree to keep heavy equipment off of there. And the distance from, uh, that fence could be from the tree, it would be particular to the species of tree. Uh, but I think in a rule of thumb, it's something like six to nine feet. Um, I don't know if any of those are practical in, in this situation.
I, I don't think it's completely practical. Um, you know, we may be within five or six feet. Um, but we are, you know, we are, we're both, uh, in agreement that it's important to us to protect all, all of these people's trees, so. Um, we will make sure that that's, uh, taken care of.
Okay, um, so it sounds like you are going to work in concert on that. Um, we'll hear from your neighbor presumably when the public hearing is open. But just to reiterate, uh, again, we've looked at this once before, and we can probably have the building inspector give you a copy of a memo from a previous application that we had, which might be useful for you. But, um, obviously digging up the roots is a problem, but also heavy equipment just driving over the roots is a problem, because it crushes them. So, which is the reason for, uh, fencing around there to keep the heavy equipment away. But, um, as long as you're aware of that and working it out with your neighbors to the best of your abilities, I, um, I think that's about the most we can ask for at this point. Um, so that was drainage, and that was construction near the property line. Um, the other question I had is the driveway. Are there any changes to the driveway?
No, we would have the garage budding up to the existing paved driveway. It would literally let's right to it.
So the garage is basically going right up to the existing driveway?
Correct.
Okay. And, um, I'll ask the building inspector a brief question about this. I think he's weighed in on this before, but Steve, you have no code-related concerns about the driveway or setbacks. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Justin, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Alright, I just want to let you know, I got an email from Art Hired earlier today, um, and he has talked to Shannon. And as far as the trees and the, and the logistics of it, he says that they have worked it out between them, just so you understand. He is a neighbor directly connected to her property.
Okay. Um, does any other board members have any questions? At this time?
I, I have one, Justin. This is Dave Marshall. And it's in reference to the plans, just making sure I understand them correctly. Um, this has to do with the front facing, uh, view of the lot. There seems to be two kitchens to the roof drawn in, slightly different than the original plans. And just wanted to comment, maybe from the architect, um, that roof structure is a little different, and I want to make sure I understand what I'm looking at.
Was it changed with a modified based on HBB?
Yeah, that's A2.
Yes, and this is A2.
And you're comparing it to?
Comparing it to A2 prior, when you didn't have the slightly more, uh, less sloped design. Yeah.
Okay, this is, this is David Burrows. I can explain this. Um, the main elevation shows a roof pitch that matches that of the house. So it's about a 12 and 12 pitch, and the idea is to emulate the appearance of the house. Then, uh, behind that, about three feet back from the front wall, is a shed dormer. So that you see in the background, three feet recessed from the front, uh, the side view or the, the front view of that shed dormer. So that's why you see two different roof pitches. The main pitch is that of the garage itself. The roof behind it is that of the shed dormer. And I don't know what drawings you have, but there's also an east elevation that shows the side view, and it shows the shed dormer basically sitting on top of the main roof. So it's kind of, uh, it's a conventional shed dormer on a garage.
Okay.
This is, I, this is a printed, just example.
Yep.
Yeah, just continued through the peak there, so, okay, I understand. I just, I appreciate that. Yep.
Okay, um, let me just ask for, like, two other basic questions. Um, with trust on landscaping, um, your property's already landscaped, and you don't have any major proposed changes to landscaping. Is that correct?
No proposed changes. And once the project's done on the east side, I will certainly make things look nice.
So you're just gonna replant the lawn and, you know, whatever garden beds or whatever you want to put in? We don't normally look, uh, a lot at residential landscaping, but it is nice to know what your intentions are.
Yep, intention is to make it look very pretty.
Okay, um, so the other question I had is utilities to the garage. What is, what is proposed?
Uh, I'm looking to have electric and, uh, let him run the water as well. Um, I don't think my contractor's on line here, but David, can you speak to that?
Um, I know that it will be a, uh, underground electric line going from the house, so there won't be any overhead wires. Um, as far as plumbing goes, that would probably be in a trench going from the basement to the garage, so there would be, again, nothing visible above grade.
Okay, so underground electric and plumbing. Steve, have you looked at the details of either of those?
Pardon?
Have you looked at, um, any of the details of their utilities that they're proposing to run to the garage?
There's nothing against the code to anything they've proposed.
So is that a yes or a no? That you've looked at them?
There's nothing that they propose that's against the code.
Okay, well, I guess that didn't answer my question, but that's okay.
So, um, if I could interject, these are not yet drawings to submit for permit. Uh, when we get approvals, we'll complete the drawings.
Okay, so you are going to propose that in your building permit application?
Right, there will be-
And then that will be reviewed by the building inspector at that time.
Correct.
And there, and any utilities that you're doing are gonna be run underground and all the work done on your property.
Yes, I'll, I'll speak for Shannon on that.
Okay. Alright, well, I guess I don't have any more questions on that at this time. Um, so let's, let's open the public hearing, unless, does anyone else have any questions?
Justin? Justin? Uh, it's Susan. I ha- I have, uh, one comment I'd like to make. And that is to, I've noted on the, on the packet that you just handed us, that the peak is actually going to be two, two feet shorter than, than the 21 feet in the original.
It's, I think it's shown in the drawings, the, the letter that was written. That you're looking at it.
And I, I'd like to explain that, David Burrows, again. Uh, we reduced the width, we reduced the width of the garage from 22 feet to 18 feet. And when you reduce the width, you also reduce the height. So the height has come down, uh, to, I don't, to whatever it says. It's, it's come down from what it had been.
Like 19 feet, it looks like.
That sounds right.
Okay, so, I, I heard mention of 18 feet earlier. I thought the comment was a mistake. So the drawings I have show 22 foot by 22 foot garage. So you say it is now 18 feet wide and 22 feet deep?
I think some of the later drawings that, uh, they were on the website that you, you shared with everyone, it does, uh, state the 18 by 22.
Yeah, the original drawings were all 18 foot wide.
Yeah.
18 foot wide and 22 feet deep is the intent. And does that still qualify as a two-car garage?
It will not, it's not a two-car garage, no. It would be considered-
Okay. Um, alright, well, I won't get into that. So, is it, any other board members have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, um, so, I would make a motion to open the public hearing at this time.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a second?
I did, Marina, Susan.
Hi, Shannon. Hi, Susan.
Hi, David.
Okay, it sounds like it's unanimous, and all five members voted in favor of opening the hearing. So, that said, if anyone interested in, uh, commenting, and I don't know how we can handle the unmute situation here.
Yes, uh, Justin, I'm interested.
Um, please, please state your- Um, please, please state your name and address, and um, and then by all means, please speak your comments.
Thank you. Bob Michaels, seventy one State Street, directly across the street from the application. Um, we would like to go on record. Is saying that we totally. Agree with this proposal. We think it'll be a very big advantage to the homeowner. We think it'll enhance the neighborhood. And it'll be good for the village in general. And I don't see any negative effect whatsoever. From the results of this application. So once again, we totally support this application. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. This is Art Puris, seventy State Street, if I might now follow. Bob?
Yeah, by all means.
Thank you. Uh, once again, um, I. Uh. Agreeing totally with, with uh Mr. Michaels, Bob Michaels has said there in support of the application. I too support it. Uh. Shannon is a great neighbor, but beyond that, as far as the specifics to this application, she and I have spoken about some of the details that she had alluded to as far as setbacks. From the property line, the trees in particular. Uh, she noted that she has uh already, or I think, uh, at least in our conversation today, but alluded to it, talking to professionals in the field as far as. Uh, people familiar with trees and how to protect trees during construction and. Um, as well as taking into consideration any kind of structures near trees, so that's all been taken in into consideration. Uh, and by the way, Steve, thank you very much for reading my comments uh on the record.
That's great. We appreciate it. You received it today and read it tonight. Thank you very much. I, the architectural elements, uh, obviously black and white renderings, drawings don't do justice, but. And I think you can all see that she's paid quite a bit of attention to the details, bringing in a number of the elements of the. House over to the garage, done very tastefully. The few minor adjustments, if there's back and forth, if the board is looking for something, I suggest that. Um, if not. Formal approval by the planning board Z B A tonight, that a conditional. Um, just with, that it be approved conditionally if need be. Uh, short of giving outright approval tonight with a revised set of plans or just delineating the one, two, three points. If there are any points made tonight by the board, maybe there won't be any. Uh, but any kind of clarification that Shannon has to provide. To any questions that the board has, that way she can comfortably move on to this application to the. Park Preservation Board. And that sums it up. If there's any questions of me, I'd be glad to. Buy additional information.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll just ask you a, just a brief question. Um, it, so in your opinion. The landscaping situation is resolved, and you are not desiring any um action by the board to that effect? You, it's in a state you find acceptable?
Yeah, yes, I think as alluded to, you had made. Initially about the three foot setback in conversations with. Shannon and then coming off her conversations with professionals in the field of. This will uh. Trees. That there, the consideration of a shift um for a bit further away. Uh, uh, with that consideration, as well as treatment of the root system during construction and. Ultimate design of the garage itself. So, yes.
Okay.
Here again artistically, artistically and aesthetically, uh, here again is Shannon being an artist reflective in. Everything that she does, interior, exterior, I, as Bob had made mention too. Uh, I think everybody will be, see it as a. Definitely an asset to that property and the community at large, the village at large. They come into a village from the east or leave from the west.
Okay, does there any other people that would like to speak?
Somebody's approaching, Justin.
Good evening. It's John Limbeck from sixty two State Street, and I'd just like to go on record that. Um, the residents of State Street have made this the most attractive entrance way into the village. You know, I'll defend that with anybody, but the. Application that we've got in front of us tonight, if you look at the dimensions of it, including the height. The appearance of it, it fits right in with everything else we've got in that entrance, but. I think it's gonna look really sharp, you know, it fits in well with the houses that are there. Uh, I just think it's gonna be a really nice addition, and I would encourage the board to go ahead and approve it, so it would be able to continue to get her approvals.
Justin, there's no other public comment here.
Okay. Um. I'll, if there's no other comments, Marina, was there any other comments that were received via email or other messages? In fact, Marina is muted. And Steve, you are unaware of any additional comments, is that correct?
No, I, I heard nothing of positive comments in regards to this project.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm having some issues with Zoom, um, but I did not receive anything via email.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, with that said, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Second, Susan.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, Susan.
Aye, Joanne.
Aye, Joanne.
And I, Justin. Guys, all five members voted to close the public hearing. Um. Okay, um, so I guess our next steps are. I guess the two questions are, do we? Um, start discussing findings? I would suggest we discuss all of our, any findings later in the meeting and try to get through these applications first. Um, and then the other question is. Um, I think getting updated drawings that reflect what's proposed makes sense. And I just want to see what the board members would like to do.
I'm personally comfortable moving ahead with an approval on the uh material received as long as we can.
Hi, uh, Susan, I'm also good with that.
I am too, Joanne.
Okay, um, we also have the question of the garage height. Um. Now, Steve had sent us a note saying that um the height of the garage was appropriate for its width. And there is mention in code of the maximum height for a accessory structure being twelve feet. And it must be less than the height of the principal structure. We agree that it definitely needs to be less than the height of the principal structure. Um, I think it also, I would, I personally would agree that twelve feet was, doesn't make any sense for this. But the question is, is a variance required? Um. So we definitely heard from Steve that he does, he believes construction wise this makes sense. But the question is, is a variance required? Um. I don't know if our attorney, Mindy, did you have any chance to look at this matter, and do you have any comments to the board?
Yeah, I have an opinion about that, and my opinion is that the code enforcement officer has the authority to interpret. The zoning code in the first instance, and it sounds like he has made a determination. To interpret section two ten dash twenty six. To mean that the accessory structure can be the greater of twelve feet or the height of the primary structure. If that is his determination, I would ask him to um, you know, make a written determination and put it in the file and file it with the clerk. So that future applicants know that this is how the village interprets section two ten dash twenty six. And it would also give um somebody an opportunity to appeal that interpretation to the Z B A in the event that they disagree with it.
All right, I will do that. Thank you.
Um, Steve, is that consistent with your um intended interpretation?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. This is Dave Marshall. Um, the primary residence structure height. Uh, essentially what I'm hearing is that. The twelve feet accessory structure uh height is essentially no longer valid if there's a primary structure taller than that. That then at that point. Any structure as an accessory structure could be up to the height of the primary structure without site plan review, excuse me, without variance. Is that correct?
That's Steve's interpretation.
My determination would be no. My determination would be that garage is a different. Structure than a shed. There, there is two different, you know, an accessory structure by the code. If you look at the previous code. The garage is a separate entity. And somehow the wording got a little jumbled up in this version of the code. Garage technically, I mean, to try and keep it at twelve foot, it's literally impossible other than single car garage. Now, a shed's only a hundred and twenty square feet max. So, you know, you're not gonna get a shed that's twelve foot tall unless you're gonna do a. You know, twenty twelve pitch or something like that, but. My determination that the garage is a separate entity. From the shed in regards to such and such, because in the code it allows the garage to be to the maximum height of the primary structure.
You're talking about the old code, man?
Pardon?
You're talking about the old code? I mean, this code doesn't seem to differentiate. Among um different accessory structures. And if that's the case, that's really, you know, I, in, in my opinion, that's an issue for the Board of Trustees to address, not to be addressed through interpretation.
Right. You can do it as you find. I, I believe that like I made a determination based on the structure. And, and the reality of building and, and what's possible. Over this board determines to handle that.
So my concern in this regard would simply be that a garage is not considered the primary structure. The house is the primary structure.
Correct.
All other structures would then be considered accessory structures, regardless of whether or not it's a shed or a garage. In my personal view is I'd prefer to grant a variance, given the consistency in design versus the structure. Rather than accept the interpretation of the building inspector. That's, that's my feeling. And is it possible to?
No, because there hasn't been an application for a variance, and it hasn't been noticed.
How long does that take?
Couple of weeks.
Between the location, everything, it probably took me almost sixty days.
So, um, so it's basically, my understanding of the concern mentioned is with this interpretation of height. Being um despite the desire to make it only applicable to garages, that's not based in code. So if interpretation means it's the greater of twelve feet or the building height, then every shed, bird feeder. Um, weather vane and whatever else someone wants to put up anywhere else. Doghouse would be um limited to the height of the prin- uh, the principal structure on the, the lot.
That's what the interpretation means, yes.
So when, when I see all these other crashes and holes that are higher than twelve feet, that's a variance?
This is the challenge of the code that's before us, not necessarily the prior code or anything that's been built, nor necessarily that what you're proposing is certainly consistent with everything we've seen before. Challenge is we have a code that we have to interpret and understand. And whether or not it's a variance to exceed the twelve feet, or we allow. Anything and everything that is essentially an accessory structure to be built to the height of any. Uh, building, primary structure. And that introduces significant risks. Uh, as an interpretation that would have longstanding. So that's my concern.
Right, I get it. I'm trying to wonder if uh, think about a way to make this specific enough.
Um. The interpretation is so broad. I think the only thing that you could do if you were um concerned about the implications of this interpretation is. If you were inclined to grant site plan approval, make it contingent upon the applicant applying for receiving an area variance.
Okay.
From section two ten twenty six.
And we can do that tonight.
Yeah.
And we, it also, it's up to the, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but the building inspector. It needs to make the determination that violates code, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
That's the way it typically works. There's, you know, further discussion that we can have about that, but we should probably have that discussion in the attorney client session.
Okay, um. Is it, uh? Here, I'll, go ahead and speak if you guys have thoughts. Um, what I would like to do is go on to our other applications. And let them present, and then we can circle back to our attorney, and we can start talking about findings. Um, for the applications. Um, does anyone have any thoughts about that proposed? Method of going forward?
The applicant has a comment.
I'm just curious with that. With that being said, what, what does that mean as far as a timing standpoint? If we make a contingent on that? Can we, I move forward with the historical preservation board meeting and continue the report?
Yes.
Uh, okay, well, I, I believe there is a few paths forward with this. First of all, I haven't heard any objections to what you're doing from anybody. So we're gonna go with the uh presumption this will move forward in some manner. Uh, and uh, the question is whether a variance needs to be granted. And um. I guess we can circle back with the building inspector and our attorney on that a little bit, but there's, it's either a yes or a no. If it's a yes, it's gonna take a month to get that resolved. Uh, at least, uh, so it'd be into our next meeting, and um if a, a variance is not needed. Then our options are to vote tonight or to vote in another meeting in the near future and get updated plans. If we have a near, a meeting in the near future after getting updated plans, if we go that route. Um, then that may not impact the schedule at all, uh, because the uh H P B meeting is at what time? If that's in um. Um, mid October?
It's just that, it would be October.
So why don't we, can we move forward with conditional approval subject to a variance?
Yeah.
That at least gives the applicant, um, you know, assurance, I mean. Gives the applicant some idea that this project can be forward subject to us working out with Mindy. What we, about the variance. That work for anybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Justin. To add to that. Justin.
Well. I guess the question is, we still. We. Um, I guess before making any formal vote, I would appreciate an opportunity to talk to our attorney about that, because there are some concerns about that. Our attorney said she wasn't comfortable speaking in um public. Do we have an ability to go and hold at least a brief attorney client session? And uh away from the public, or is that not doable with this?
Uh, yeah, we, we can walk in there, request that, and does anyone have uh Justin's cell phone number? Justin, can we play on your cell phone?
Yeah, that can, that can work for me. I can just mute myself, and you can call my cell phone.
All right, we'll, we'll call you in.
Okay.
All right, so we're, um, I'll make a motion then to enter attorney client session, and for everyone that's waiting, I would. Um, we'll try to keep this um as brief as possible, so hopefully no more than five or ten minutes. I apologize for this. This is not something we usually like to do in the middle of a meeting.
I'll second. Dave Marshall, second.
Susan, uh, uh, aye.
Aye.
Dave Marshall, aye.
Okay. All right, we will be right back. Thank you very much.
Don't forget to mute yourself.
Don't forget to mute yourself.
Village Hall may want to mute. I'm not sure if this is, if you guys are in your session or not, but we can hear you.
They left the room.
All right.
Okay, is audio working again?
We're just, we're missing Mindy and Dave. They'll be right along. Your car will, thank you.
Yes, it will. It will. Yeah.
Thirty years, they're coming.
My daughter's story, you know.
Yes, I did.
Did I? I can take walks around.
There's a, there's a little book, and I think it's at the library, about barns of the village. Pretty interesting how many there really are.
Yeah. No, they're real, yeah, very much. I know quite a few of those.
Our barn actually dwarfs the house. It's so much bigger than the house. Collar bigger.
It is neat to see the collection of images of overall side by side.
You know what, there are some. Somebody got left in line.
Okay, is everybody back?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, I'll make a motion to return to the regular meeting.
Second.
Susan, I.
David.
Justin, I. Okay. Um, all right, so we heard some commentary from our attorney. I, what I would like to do at this point is table the discussion and resume it and at a future meeting that is very close to, as soon as possible, I propose next Monday, so that that would not slow down any potential reviews by the preservation board. Does anyone have commentary on that proposal for having a meeting next Monday?
I'm fine with it. That works for me as well, Justin.
I'm available.
Can I be present?
Marina, are you able to be present?
I can do 7:30 date. So if you want to do it around that time, that's fine.
What is the date we're proposing?
Next Monday.
27?
Yes. Yes, I can be there for that.
At what time are we going to propose? Say 6:30?
It's not good for John.
Not good.
I can do six, I cannot, I can't. I can't do Monday.
Okay. How about Tuesday?
I can do Tuesday.
I can do Tuesday.
I can do Tuesday? I will.
Available Tuesday.
Me too.
Is a room available Tuesday?
Wednesday?
Yep, Wednesday, 29.
I'm good. I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay.
Is some room available?
There's nothing else on the calendar.
Yes.
Calendar, please. Nobody else takes it. All right.
I can do it, but I will be traveling a long distance that day. So if you have it, say 7 o'clock, I think I can do. Does that work for people?
Sure.
And give me cans to eat and so on.
Yeah. And this can be, um, we can do this either all by Zoom or by a combination.
Doesn't matter, I'm planning during whatever.
Let's see what else we, might add to that agenda.
Okay, my clarification, my free presence next week, do you Zoom or in person?
If you want to attend, the public hearing has been closed, so if they have any questions, they can, you know, we can ask you to attend.
Okay. And that's for approval or for?
It's for, uh, continued deliberations on your application.
Okay.
But you can continue before the HPP.
Yeah, so just to the applicant, the goal here is we'd like to wrap this up and not delay your review before the architectural review board. So we want to wrap up the application next week and wherever that's going to be, we haven't heard any objections so far. So that's what we're proposing to both wrap this up properly and not delay your schedule.
So we'll be tabling this then?
Yes.
Yeah.
The motion was made to table it for this meeting and to resume discussion on September 29th at 7:00 PM.
Second, Dave Marshall.
Oh, hi, Susan. Hi, Joanne.
Hi, John.
Hi, Dave Marshall.
Thank you.
Hi, Justin. Please, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay. We have the next application on the agenda was 24 Monroe Avenue. Do we have anyone representing the applicant here?
Yes, somebody's approaching now.
Let me check. So the purpose of this project is this enlarged garage, a house. The house was a uniquely designed house in the 60s, signed by the same owner as the planetarium, the Boston Bird Planetarium. And the geometry of the house was built in such a way or designed in such a way that had lots of geometric forms. There is kind of a tricky design from a new edition space that looked like it could fit into the building and would work for the functionality and the programming of space. So we came up with two different designs and we also have the final one. The design that we have is thousands per feet of pool space. There's an addition for an extra bay for a garage and also some extra accessory space in the garage. And as well as a new larger room on the interior of this condition space that's more functional than the current room that is kind of some an office slash bedroom with a Murphy bed and an exercise bike, so it's too large in that to make that a little more functional. The building itself is, you know, the addition is a thousand square feet. That's 1% of the lot coverage. The lot coverage goes from 4.1% to 5.1%. And there's a small addition of asphalt as well. 300 square feet was a warmie, 308. And that is proposed to be permeable asphalt. That way, you know, we're not adding more stone water to the site. The edge of the garage, the closest edge of the addition is 63 feet away from the property line. There's plenty of space, lots of landscaping around. The house itself and the garage is not visible from the public right of way. It's a flag lot, it was set off of Main Street. It's a large, a large lot. And it's a design that we feel fits in with the architecture. Check boxes, all the boxes for the program spaces and the functionality that's needed. And, you know, we tried to address everything that was, that could have been, you know, concerns of the board here, lighting, for instance. Typically, all of our lights that we specify for outside of buildings are always dark sky policy compliant. So we don't want light to be, getting light pollution up to the sky. We don't want the light to be visible or the glare from light to be visible from outside the property line. So these lights that we have proposed for the outside are cam lights we set up in the office. There's an existing socket that wraps around the building currently with cam lights in it that are heating down. So this is just continuing what's existing there already. Stone water drainage, the way the drainage works is that the drainage goes into internal rainwater leaders on the roof and then goes into some sort of drain that's existing. The new roof that we're doing, we're taking, we're not doing that, we're taking the water and doing a similar roof drain, but it's going on to daylights into the yard area. Landscaping around the garage consists of mainly just some small strides and bushes to hide some of the air conditioning units. So currently, the air conditioning condensers are over in that location. We're shifting those over and providing some landscaping to hide them a little bit on the driveway. Any questions?
Yes, I, we had a, I'll let you speak to this first, but we had quite a bit of commentary about this construction in close proximity to the Village Storm Zoo or that's on the property. So I wanted to, first of all, have you go ahead and update the board on what your thoughts are on that. And then I'd like to have some discussion with the board members about that.
So the storm drain that is assumed position, we don't know exactly where it is that we're going to be spoke out, you know, at the time of construction. You know, the thoughts were that if the, if the storm drain is in a location that is too close to the foundation of the footer or impact that or impacts future work on the storm drain to repair it or fix it. or impact that or impacts, um, future work on the storm drain to repair it or fix it, um, then we would move the storm drain. The storm drain has been relocated at one point in the past. Um, basically it was relocated to put the, the house in that angle when they built the house. Um, and then, you know, if we need to relocate it again, we can, we can do so. That, that storm drain, um, I'm not sure how many houses tied into, into the storm drain. Uh, but you know, it's one that basically it goes out towards now, um, drains into the canal and they're not adding any, um, stone water to it.
Okay, um, so I'd like to update what the, both the applicant and the board members a little bit on this. So first of all, um, this, the storm drain is, you said, um, the exact location of it is unclear. Um, so that, that's a concern is believed, the information I talked to both the village engineer and the superintendent of public works briefly on this. And I think they both agree they don't know exactly where it is. Um, it's approximately eight feet deep. And it cert, it, um, is fifteen inch diameter per your drawings and they believe that to be likely to be accurate. Um, but it feeds the streets. So it actually connects to Monroe Avenue and serves as road drainage for that. And it also, um, connects to Washington and, um, was it Lincoln? Um, so there's a couple other streets it connects to. So it serves a prominent function and in particular it drains a state highway, which is of concern. Um, the construct, your drawings that you showed, it looked like the storms sewer line was going to run approximately three feet, a little bit from your proposed addition. It already is close to your garage as I understand it. Um, so I talked a little bit to the engineer and I'm just going to update everybody on some of the concerns. There is, there's three problems with construction close to the storm sewer. Um, first of all, most of the village needs to maintain it. And the engineer stated that to dig a trench to access that, that if it's eight feet deep and that remains to be seen, um, it would be a trench about ten to fifteen feet wide. So if your house is only three feet from the storm drain, um, that would be a problem. And so if maintenance needs to be done to replace a section, to repair it, whatever it needs to be. Um, the easement in the adjacent property, the Drake's, is thirty feet wide that they negotiated with them. So that gives the village a thirty foot wide section to use for, uh, to access it for repairs. Okay, so repairs is one problem. The two other problems with construction next to a storm sewer is, um, one, you don't want to break it when you're constructing. That's certainly a problem. But if it was to leak and you have a foundation near there, within say three feet of it, then there's potential for sewage to leak into your basement or foundation, which does not sound good. Um, the other problem, potential problem with a leak is if it's saying on the top of the pipe, then water and dirt go into the pipe and it forms a sinkhole over the top of it. So constructing near there opens you up to maintenance problems, sinkholes and possibly sewage going into your basement. So it's not a, a good situation. That said, um, no one has any specific recommendations at this time other than the recommendation is, hey, let's figure out exactly where this sewer pipe is and then let's talk about it and see what we can do. Um, so that was the recommendation of the engineer is to figure out exactly where it is and, and then come up with a plan. And as you said, I think there's multiple options for what to do, but until we know where it is, we can't make those options.
Justin, this is Mindy. I have a question. So has somebody asked the village attorney whether there's a recorded sewer easement that has a meets and bounds description of the location of the easement?
Um, there is some discussion of whether there is an easement and the, yes, the village attorney mentioned that some was repaired last year on the Drake's property and an easement was obtained that I believe went partially onto the applicant's property. And then they also say that there is a repair done about ten years ago between the canal and I think one of the manholes. That was away from that structure, but there is an easement. Again, this was on the applicant's property. Uh, my understanding is there's one there. We saw a crude map of them, but I haven't seen really where those are exactly relative to the construction.
And an easy way to find this out might be to ask the applicant, you know, to get an instrument survey of the property that includes all the quarter easements.
Um, I, I think that would make sense is to get an updated survey that, um, and site plan drawing that shows, um, the easements and the location of the utility lines and the storm sewer.
Well, our understanding from what the next, uh, survey that there is no easement currently. Um, there's also in the, the current half that where we think the storm sewer might be, um, is actually at the, at the far, at the existing garage, um, it's currently only about four foot six away. So, you know, the town isn't going to get a thirty foot easement because the buildings are already there. Uh, again, it's my understanding that this easement was moved to its current location, um, when the house was built. So, so there, there's, there's a new manhole basically over on one side of the house and then another one at, at the far end that was kind of the bend in the, uh, in the, in the storm sewer when it was, you know, in the sixties. Being that the, being that the existing storm sewer might only be, you know, four foot six away from the current house. And our new garage is four feet away from the same line. Um, we didn't think that that was any more restrictive than, you know, what's really already there. Um, also too with, you know, with, with, when, when you're digging for an eight foot trench, um, yes, you have to go ten to fifteen feet wide if you're going to do an open trench. But if you do, um, if you still play, if you shore it up, then you can go straight down as deep as you need to. Um, so it doesn't mean, doesn't mean that you have to do a fifteen foot wide trench to dig down it to be deep. This means that you have to be short enough. Um, as far as, you know, the, the leaking into it, you know, the, this is a garage going next to there. Um, so we're not worried about leaking sewage into a basement or anything. There is a basement. Um, but you know, as far as the, the location of where the corner of the garage is that's near the sewer and then there's also an existing tree there that we're trying to save. So in order to save that tree, the way that would work is that they'd be doing air blasting around the roots in order to save. So they, they basically put the tree chemically to sleep so it thinks that it's hypermating. Um, and air blast around the area. So basically it's very gentle for the roots. And if there is a sewer in that location, again, if there's not going to be, um, lots of banging and heavy excavation right in that corner because of the tree, we're going to be doing air blasting. So it's, it's kind of something where the, the sewer is probably in the best location to have that kind of excavation. Um, in that one location that compared to like the backside of the garage that will be excavated with heavy equipment.
Okay, um, thank you for the, the updates here and the commentary. Um, so I guess I'm willing to hear from, um, other members of the board to see, oh, maybe we should open the public hearing first. Um, and then we can discuss this a little further. Is everyone all right with that?
Sure.
Justin, I have one question and clarification, um, if I could, based on my own ignorance. Uh, if there is no easement, we won't know that until we get an instrument survey. But if there is no easement, who has the maintenance requirement for that pipe?
Um, well, given that this pipe is draining a state highway, if there is a problem with it, I think it's going to be kind of imperative to fix it. Um, I think this is a good opportunity to maybe sort some of this stuff out. And ideally, I think if we can come up and involve all the interested people, if we know where this pipe is, um, I would ultimately like to come up with a plan that figures out, okay, how can the applicant construct what they want to construct? How can we maintain this pipe? And, um, yada, yada, yada. Um, so if we can get to a mutually beneficial agreement, uh, that makes everybody happy, that would be great. But I think starting with knowing where this pipe is is kind of important. Uh, and where all these easements are. Um, the village may want to take up a, um, expand the easement and work that all into a, um, a maintenance arrangement for this pipe. I don't know where this needs to go, but it seemed pretty clear to me that talking to the village engineer and everybody else is that step one is identifying exactly where this is. And then we need to involve a bunch of people to figure out how to make this all work and, uh, while trying to accommodate, um, allowing the applicant to build what they want to build. Um, that's my thoughts right now.
And technically, technically, if you look at the max, this is going any closer than current existence to the sewer pipe, the way I figured it using the drawings and the scales, three inches. That's it. You're going to go three inches closer than the, the structure already exists to the sewer. So the same maintenance issue, if you think there's a maintenance issue, already exists on the property. So they're not going to make it any worse or any more difficult to maintain than currently exists today.
It's our understanding too from a letter that was sent to the owners recently that, um, Monroe County Department of Environmental Services has, Division of Pure Waters has looked at it. Um, I have any comments. Um, the State Department of Transportation, New York State DOT just has looked at it too. Did not have any comments.
I sent them, I got it back when I sent it to Holland today.
Okay, um, I'd like to go ahead and open the hearing. We can hear from the public and anyone that wants to speak. So I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second, Dave Marshall.
Susan, I. Joanne, I.
Dave Marshall, I.
Justin, please draw. I. Okay, is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak?
Nobody's going forward, Justin.
Okay. Um, all right then, um, what, uh, other thoughts are there among board members regarding the sewer line easements and so on?
Justin?
Yes.
Uh, check in with Marina.
Marina, are you aware of any comments from the public?
I do not have any in my email, no.
Okay. All right, um, I'm just, for now, I'd just like to talk amongst the board and not make any decision as to whether to keep the public hearing open or close it. Um, so the applicant mentioned that this is already a problem and that's known. My personal thought is I, I'm really uncomfortable with going forward on this without knowing where this pipe exactly is located. I think that's really us not doing our duty here and.
Said there's a problem? Who, who, who is the applicant that says there's a problem?
No.
Yep.
Got it?
Yeah.
When we did the Drake line, um, Zach and I camered the whole line from the driveway, um, manhole down to the manhole in the back of the driveway. And it runs on a straight line, a dead straight line from the manhole on the left side of the driveway to the manhole that's in the back. So his drawing, the way it's drawn on this is accurate. There's no, it's a straight line. He camered that whole line when it came to do redoing Drake's front line to make sure that everything was valid before doing the repair from Monroe Avenue down to the manhole in the back of the car.
Well, excuse me, can you just identify yourself so that they can read it?
The owner. We had scanx fund that did, um, just like camera down. Our entire line out to the canal was yellow on October first of twenty twenty. And they said the line was in great shape from when it had been done, got nice, you know, got nice height, um, when it had been replaced. So the line is in great shape. We plan on maintaining that, you know, with, with regular scans in the future, just to make sure everything is good. Um, but that line, they said it's in great shape.
So you know where the line is?
You literally can take a string.
We had scans, yeah. We had the camera going down all the way. Doing good shakes.
But the camera went through the inside of the pipe underneath the ground. Did it also tell you where it was in relation to the top of the ground?
Well, it's a straight line from manhole to manhole.
Are you talking about depth?
Depth and location.
And like I say, you can, you can take a string, you want to evacuate the patient, you can take a string from the center of the one manhole to the center of the other and you'll get an exact line. That line is dead straight from the driveway, which is prior to the house, to the manhole that's beyond the house. It is a dead straight line. So you know exactly where that pipe is.
And is that pipe location set forth in any of the application?
Yeah, he's got a red line on one of the, I don't know which drawing, but in one of the drawings and it made a drawing.
Yep.
It shows the exact line. It shows the distance of fifty one inches, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and the new one will be a forty eight.
Okay, so you're referring to a map that says new first floor plan?
What she did to see.
Yeah, on, um, on eight two point zero. This is on phase fifty three?
Or sixty four.
What we do is we have a, it's all test.
Yep, no, I know where it's for. And it's the corner at the top that you're going to, right? Where those two new shrubs and the, and the point for the line you say is at those six inches lower. Right?
Three inches.
Three inches. Okay.
Justin, this is Dave. Um, in the absence of an easement, and it being that easement by which we could dictate the, or suggest or otherwise the ten foot distancing requirement. In the absence of that easement, uh, what parts of the code give us the opportunity to, uh, suggest all arrangements to a plan, uh, should it be necessary for the applicant? And is there any is the better question?
I think.
Yeah, Mindy, if you want to address some of that.
Yeah, so in sight plan with you, you're allowed to look at drainage impacts. And if there, if the town engineer or the village engineer had a concern that construction in this vicinity would impair the storm sewer, that would be a drainage impact that would allow you to put some type of condition on the approval.
And that would be a question before the building inspector and the engineers to ask for their impact of this.
Right, I think it would be appropriate to ask the, the village engineer for an opinion.
For the absence of an easement, then we would defer to the engineers and building inspector's opinions to the impact of this development on that pipe.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
And I reckon the quarter is only forty two inches deep. Here, I don't have anything there for minutes.
But that's, so what, what's key here is the understanding that because we don't have a definitive instrument survey with the current recorded easements, we can't make the determination as to whether or not we're held to the ten foot standard or defer instead to the building inspector and the engineer. So if it were me, I think all discussions aside, we could continue on about other elements of the project. But with regards to the pipe, I'd just simply like to just throw until we get that survey.
Yeah, and look, but there's been commentary about other people looking into this. Licensed professionals figure this stuff out. That's why they exist. So a surveyor would be the licensed professional, um, that it can find this pipe and put it accurately on a drawing. And then he can state the accuracy on the drawing. I don't believe an architect even can. I don't believe an architect even can do that. I think that's outside of their licensed training. And um, I I'm really not interested in, I'm speaking for myself here. And listening to all we think it says, we think it's that. I'd like to know exactly what it is and have a licensed professional vouch for their findings. And I would like a, I'd like to see a site plan. Um, the drawing that's shown on page A zero dot zero, um, I would like to see that. Drawing actually show all easements and show this pipe on there. And I'd also like to see a a survey that shows this pipe that stamped by a surveyor that meets his. Uh, and um, that meets, that's up to uh his level of expertise. That's, those are my thoughts. Um, and and my other thoughts regarding easements and other things is um, once we get those drawings, I would like to refer the matter. To the trustees, village engineer and um superintendent for um comments to see what they have to thought, what they think. Uh, so once we know where it is, if they think it doesn't impair maintenance, then fine. If the truck, if we forward it to the trustees and they want to negotiate an easement, they're welcome to do that. If they want, if they want to move the pipe at their own expense, they can do that. Uh, but I think knowing where this is, there may be some future discussions as to, uh, I guess what I would hope. Would be a mutually beneficial outcome that would lead to a maintainable pipe and lead to and the applicant being able to construct what they want to construct.
This is already my address when I had BPW and he has no concerns.
So why don't we do that? Why don't we have the applicants submit? A survey showing exactly where the pipe is, uh, a licensed surveyor. You can overlay one with the current structure, one with the new proposed structure. And submit that as soon as possible, preferably before our next special meeting, which is next Wednesday, if possible. And we'll address this issue. Is that possible? Probably not, but I will make some phone calls to surveyors.
Just as a a comment to the applicant, um, our engineer did speak highly of the surveyor that's uh the drawing was from. Um, so you probably would, you can use whomever you want. But that surveyor was capable, they already have files on the property that might be your um least cost option. I'm not going to recommend you use any particular person, but um, they they were a capable option, whatever.
Yeah, we will try on missile, if missile first. We'll have a look with him and he's typically.
Okay, and now as far as other things go, um, with regards to the plan, um. I had a question for Steve. Uh, with the comments I heard is this was setback and not visible from the public. Is this going to be subject to an H P B review or not?
I don't believe so. Not visible from anywhere, not visible from across the canal. It is not visible from any roadway or sidewalk or. Or public D.
Okay, um, so. And that said, Steve, um, you've talked to the applicant about materials and so on. Did you have any concerns about any other building materials they're using? Uh, it it seems like they're trying to basically just continue the existing structure. Is that your thoughts?
And by, I mean, looking at it, it looks like it's fixed with the both teeth with the house existing. I don't have a full construction drawing yet, but. The way it looks to be constructed is in character of the existing home that exists today.
Um, yeah, can we, uh, maybe we should ask the applicant to fill some of that in too. Um, it looked, so can you clarify the materials and so on and how they relate to the existing house?
And this is Chris Kesten of the architect guy. All the materials are meant to match the existing house. Um, same siding, same windows, same color, same roof. Uh, it's meant to match and one right in.
Okay, um, just asking because if we don't have the other board to look at this, they tend to look at that. But if you're matching the existing house, I have no concerns about that. That's, that that's the ideal situation. Um. Great, so it's a long way from adjacent properties. And for drainage, you said you were just going to connect a couple new um downspouts. And you're not modifying the rest of the house, but for the new portion, it sounded like you were just going to use splash blocks. And it's however far from adjacent property is fifty feet, sixty feet, that's not likely to be a problem. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's one down, one down spot with the new drainage and it's, you know, the edge of it would be sixty three feet change away from the property line.
Okay, and as far as other items, uh, that. You mentioned lighting, you plan to use uh dark sky compliant lights and uh stick to um. I don't know if I've heard what brightness you're looking for. Uh, can you, can you explain a little bit about your lights in a little more detail?
Well, I mean, code only requires uh one point five foot candles outside of a, outside of an entrance to a building. Uh, which is very little. Um, the lights that are there now, the goal is to match the lights that are there now that are around the garage. So I'm not sure whether those lights are at twenty seven hundred K color temperature or three thousand. Um, but we want to make sure that they match that way you will have five color lights on part of the building.
Yeah, yeah, so I usually when I look at residential things like that, that's all we we look for is we often put a condition of approval that lights will be twenty seven hundred Kelvin to three thousand Kelvin. So they're the standard warm white color. Um, the code allows you to use seven fixtures with a single bulb that's seventy five watts or less. Without any concern, we, this board can approve brighter lights, should that be um, should you be interested in that? Uh, and when we look at them, basically, like you said, we're looking for um no light spillage on adjacent properties and things like that. So I was just hoping to clarify what you're looking to do here. I I'm not hearing any concerns.
Yeah, I mean, go go on. My my guess is forty watt lights. Um, you know, I I like looking at stars and I don't like light pollution. So my my goal has always been to um limit the amount of light that people see in both the layers and then off the property line.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and um, so as far as landscaping goes, uh, you're, it sounded like you're trying to preserve an existing tree so you don't damage it, which sounds excellent. And otherwise, you're just going to maintain the existing landscaping and it doesn't sound like you're proposing anything substantial other than planting a few shrubs uh around the perimeter.
Yeah, the the shrubs are meant just to hide um the the A C condensers. So there's currently a couple A C condensers that are um outside the building, uh, those getting moved about ten feet over for the ones that go to the edge of the addition. Uh, and then there's one new small um H B A C condenser that will be a um for the split mini system. So that that's, you know, that's only about twelve inches deep and thirty inches wide. Um, again, both of all those are basically just surrounded by shrubs, so we have. Um, you know, one, we have three condensers that we have, you know, four shrubs on the plan. Um, and then there is a uh generator for the house. Um, that generator again is going to have new lighting size.
Any thoughts from other board members?
Yes, and this is uh Dave Marshall. I just wanted to add that last night I had the opportunity to visit the property and speak with the property owners. And in review of the uh proposed uh site plan and construction. It looks to be very well done, very consistent with the uh existing home and thoughtfully crafted through absent of the conversation on the pipe. Um, I have no further questions.
I I think by the time and the request from the applicant, I think we should table this now. Um, so we will schedule everybody else that's here and it seems you can give us that. That that's the version on, um, we'll see you next month.
Very good, yeah.
I agree with that.
That's.
Yeah, so here's my suggestion. I'll probably compromise it in a motion. Let's um table it for now. Let's um continue the, leave the public hearing open and continue discussion on the twenty ninth. Um, if no new, if you can't get the updated survey by then, that would be fine, but. Um, I think if you can get us some kind of estimate as to when you can get that in. Then we can schedule a subsequent meeting on the twenty ninth to further the discussion. Should that be necessary? Does that that seem reasonable?
Sure.
Do we need to, we already opened um for public comment, this application, we haven't closed it nor should we.
Correct.
Right.
We'll leave it open.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to table this and continue discussion on September twenty ninth at seven P M.
Second, Susan.
Kate Marshall, I.
Julian, I.
And Justin Bleedstra, I.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and the last one is forty two Monroe Avenue. I'm sorry, it's not the last one, that's just the next application.
We have a gentleman stepping before us now, Justin.
Evening, board. I'm Jack Sigrist, the architect of the project.
I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Sigrist, S I G R I S T.
Um, okay, um, would you like to go ahead and uh give us an introduction on your project?
Sure. Um, we're proposing to add a sixteen by twenty addition on the back of the existing garage. There'll be slab on grade. Um, it'll be a one story building. It'll be maintained and used basically for kind of a kitchen playroom. Um, throughout the year. Uh, off of that, it'll have a twenty four by fourteen deck. Um, this will be to the north of the existing building. The um, the existing, the new building will be shorter by two feet than the existing garage. Um, my existing garage is eighteen feet high. Um, let's see, what else can I tell you? Lighting is going to be low low, as you can see, and we have a plan to be called for three hundred. Thirty bucks. Less. Um. Maybe we'll help and we'll be done by. Downspouts, existing four downspouts are there now. We'll be tying into them, except for the last two at the back of the building. The drainage goes from Monroe Avenue down towards the north. Um, and it is probably three feet lower than the existing garage as far as grade is concerned. Um, and what else can I tell you?
There's no easement for uh.
Hopefully not.
No, yeah.
No, the answer is no. Um, the existing garage is about twenty feet off the property. Um, the side property line, and so the the addition at the back will be aligned with the garage on the left side.
Consistent elevation with the current garage.
Yes, and it's a, the existing garage is stuck up with wood trim, which is going the same thing.
Justin, if I may just briefly. I had an opportunity as well yesterday to visit with the uh property owners and look at the plans there on site. And again, similar to the last project, I feel like the property owners as well, the architects have. Uh, thoughtfully crafted a way to add value and um an experience for the property owner. This particular uh property, as you look beyond the pool, sort of slopes down into an open field. That the property owners had expressed an interest in trying to create a structure by which they could share and experience that open field. Rather than the uh from the main house where the pool would interfere with that sort of sloping field and open area. So by creating this uh room behind the garage coupled with the porch to sit upon and sort of view down into that open space. It really does, uh, I think for them, uh, capture some opportunity on the property that previously they didn't have. Um, so that's just my thoughts initially on the project, um, absent of some of the more specific requirements from the site plan perspective.
Okay, um, so again, now the driveway is remaining unchanged. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay, and uh, so I see where this is located. It's away from the property line. They uh would agree that uh the drainage, I didn't quite catch what you said was uh the drains. Are you tying it into an existing drain system?
And the existing drainage system is just um. I'm I'm missing the words, just open to the uh.
Downspouts.
Down, yes. Um, and that we're going to be doing the same thing. There's no way we feel we can get the water back up to Monroe Avenue.
Um, maybe we get some commentary on Steve, uh, Steve, you, do you have any um comments on drainage? And uh, I. Any concerns there?
No, that that property drains downward backwards towards the canal and they use the structure that they're added into. In no way can affect neighboring property by the the top biography of the land and how it falls towards the canal.
Okay, um, all right, Steve, thank you very much for the input. Um, again, I guess we can ask again, do you have any major, um, any major landscape changes that you're proposing?
Um, well, at the back of the garage right now, it's all weedy and overgrown. The homeowner tried to grow stuff there last year and it was not successful and already the weeds have taken over completely. So we're just clear that part of the lot out and that's where we're putting the addition.
Okay, um, I'll suggest we just open a public hearing then and see if the public would like to make any comments. Um, so we'll go ahead and make that motion.
I second it, Susan.
Okay, and do you vote?
I, Dave Marshall.
Hi, Julian.
Hi, John.
Hi, Justin Bleedstra. Okay, do we have anyone in attendance that would like to submit comments?
We do not.
No, we don't.
Okay, Marina or Steve, have we received any comments via email?
Do not have anything in my email.
I have not received any comments on this project.
Okay.
Justin, I have a, just a question and clarification, if I may.
Okay.
With regards to uh height of accessory structures, again, understanding that this is not the primary structure. Uh, my question is, is the continuation of an existing structure's roof line? Does it apply to the height requirement of the accessory structure or in that it's already there? Is that requirement waived?
I guess that'd be a question for Mindy.
And didn't you say it was lower by two feet?
Yes.
Right. If it's lower than two feet, if it's two feet lower than the roof line of the existing accessory structure, it's either a pre-existing. Uh, non-conforming condition or we can, I can safely assume that it complies with.
Right.
Code.
So this. So this difference here, as noted on the illustration, between the existing building and the roofline behind it, that is a two-foot.
It actually looks like that's a foot and a half or something, but it's basically lower.
Lower, but not two feet low.
Not two feet lower. I was just looking at.
Where does that take us?
Well, it's still lower than the apex of the existing accessory structure, so you're okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And Steve, you said this was just minimally visible by the sidewalk on Monroe Avenue?
Just one corner, still a foot and a half to one from the HPB. It's very minimally from one spot on the side. And from the left side, from the other side, you can't see it all.
What would you consider the impact to the neighboring properties to be, if any, particularly on the western facing side?
None, they're all slopes under our own property. There's landscape, kind of rough landscape between them and us.
That's how I recall it as well, your distance is clearly one to three feet from the property.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, this won't affect anybody else's sightline to now or to anything, you know, per.
Yeah, that's the way I saw it as well, you know, there.
Maybe I'll ask a question about utilities again. What are your plans to get utilities to the garage? Or are you, are they already existing?
Now, the only, well, the only thing that exists, I believe, right now is power. But we'll be putting that underground. It's, I don't think it is, it is underground now. But we'll be doing power, water, and then we'll be putting sewage to an ejector pump. We're going to back up to the building, up to the main house, and hell, we'll take care of it.
So the, so the electric will be, the existing will be left there, you're not expanding that?
No, I don't see any electric now, so we're going to have to provide power to the building.
Okay, so again, you're going on new utilities, they're all underground?
Correct.
And the building inspector, Steve, you'll be reviewing that with the building permit? And do you have any concerns about these utilities at this time?
No, it will be reviewed with the regular drawings for a permit.
Okay, and you have no concerns?
No, no concern.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any other questions, anyone has?
This is Dave Marshall, I might have missed it already, but in regards to lighting, being a pool-side venue, it is often maybe something people might like to have more lighting on their pool in the evening.
I don't think we're going to, I don't think we're going to be able to get any lighting from this structure to the pool because the pool is probably five, six feet up.
I saw it the same way, I just wanted to ensure that it would be the case, so all lighting needs standards and codes.
And this property is not part of the LWRP, right?
It's in the LWRP, but this is a type 2 seeker action. So it's exempt from LWRP review.
Thank you.
So maybe this is a good time to update all that. I believe all three of these residential applications are type 2 and seeker. No environmental review is required because residential additions and new buildings are exempt from seeker review. And the, we also, Steve and I talked a while back about county planning review of these applications. And the residential additions to a house, we believed are subject to county planning referral. And however, Steve looked up the agreement with county planning and accessory, residential accessory structures are exempt from county planning referral. So we don't need to refer these garages or garage additions to county planning. That was what our findings were. So we, so I believe only 24 Monroe Avenue was forwarded to county planning, is that correct, Steve?
Yeah, I said 24 because of the size.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I guess normally what we do here is go over whatever our findings are. What do people want to do? Do you want to do that tonight? You want to do it now, you want to do it later?
Well, Susan, so you know, since we have an additional agenda item, I wouldn't mind postponing that. Don't know how other people think.
I'm pretty weary and I wouldn't mind doing that either, and we should just wrap it up next week.
Would we be voting on it tonight and then doing the findings next week? It would be between the findings and then voting on it next week.
We can vote, aye?
And we had some discussion.
Have you had sufficient discussion to be able to make a determination? Why don't you, you know, I mean, if you're going to do it next week, why not?
Okay.
Justin?
I'm fine with that, I'll make a motion then to table this for now and we'll continue discussion on the 29th of September at 7:00 PM. And I guess maybe I will add to that motion to close the public hearing.
I can add more.
Susan, aye. Joanne, aye.
Justin Leetstra, aye.
And just to the applicant, you are going for the Manhattan zoning board next, I'm sorry, HPB next month, is that correct?
I wasn't aware that you had to, but yeah.
Is that correct, Steve?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so delaying our findings until the 29th in no way slows down the project.
Right, well, it won't affect the timeframe at this, at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so just to the applicant, what we usually do is we'll write up a resolution with findings and get that all in writing and then vote on it. And it sounds like from everything we've heard that this is a nice project, that's not causing any concerns. So we'll just do our paperwork and wrap that up at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do I have to talk in the next step of the meeting?
Justin, the way I would go about this with the applicant is unless we specifically request their presence, it's reasonable for them to not present.
Yeah, I don't see any reason for them to, I don't require their attendance. They're certainly welcome to attend if they'd like to. But all we're going to do is vote on this and write our findings consistent with what was discussed tonight. And I'm not expecting anything alarming to happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck.
All right, we have one other item on the agenda, and I'm not going to participate in this. So I think it's best if I just leave the meeting. And Susan, you were going to run the meeting, I presume?
Sorry.
Mindy?
Yes. Yes, Marina? Marina, I can't hear you. Marina, do you have a question?
I did, but I can't talk.
I hear you now.
Oh, okay, I was asking if we needed a formal motion to change over acting chairpersons.
No.
That's all, thank you.
Susan's been acting chair for years.
Yeah, I guess I have one other question for the board. I'm going, I was planning to leave. There was discussion about this Canal Corp situation, and I didn't know if we wanted further discussion at some point with our attorney about that.
Let's talk about it next week during a special, you know, either before or after the special meeting.
Okay, very well done, I will leave, carry on, thank you, Susan.
Yep, thanks, thanks, Justin.
And I, Justin.
Okay, so that brings us to an initial concept review meeting with 75 Monroe, with PCT, Chris, and New Architects.
Whoa.
Good.
Okay, I'll leave it for, I'll leave for recording secretary.
Right.
Great, thanks, guys. So just as a reminder, this meeting involves your request for a pre-application concept review. We're not making any decisions tonight, and nor are we accepting public comments. But the public may submit comments after the meeting directly to the clerk or the deputy, or submit them through the website. So before we start, we do want to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing. There is a letter dated August 16th, 2021. There is a 75 Monroe submission dated July 9. And that was to us, and then there was a submission to the HPB dated August 24th. So, and the pagination is not consistent.
That's right.
But that's your, yes. So I also have a request for my own, for consistency sake, my own sanity, looking, looking at these plans, that the buildings be designated in a consistent way. We've already seen them designated as A, B, A, B, C, up to D, and then grouped in buildings one, two, and three. Looks like there are seven buildings involved, could we name them one through seven?
Yeah, well, again, as we get into this, as you know, we've been meeting with the HPB and they've already requested changes, so the plan is moving as we, as we speak.
So we have different nomenclature now, so it's really three groups of buildings, and then within each group, we're identifying how it's broken down and go more detail.
We can explain it more to when we get there.
Okay.
We'll tell you where we are.
But my request is that each building be identified in a singular way. So like not build, not as part of a group.
Okay.
Is that possible?
I would say this, we're happy to do what you request, but if you give us a chance to explain it, you might understand it better. It's the exact opposite of what the HPB told us.
So, so here's the thing, I completely get you're putting it in groups, right? You have building one that has A, B, and C, building two that pretty much looks like a repeat of A, B, and C, and then a third building, right, seven buildings altogether. So whatever the HPB is asking you to do, which is perfectly fine. But in addition to that, I think you need to simply put a unique identifier on each of the seven buildings.
Each of the segments?
No, each of the seven, there's only three buildings. Okay, so let's stop there and let's dive into that. So there's building one, correct?
Right.
Building one has three separate structures, is that correct?
Again, if you give us a chance, they can explain how those buildings are set up. It's, it's three different segments, just really one building.
Okay, what's, what's the difference, what's the segment of the building?
So, go ahead, want to explain it? Can I, can I, can I just take this back for a second?
I feel like we're being attacked for no reason. This is totally not.
Just not, not an attack at all. I'm Susan Loda, and Joanne Shannon and I have been part of this review for some years. We have two new members, David Marshall and John Katura.
I appreciate it.
That's awesome.
Can I, can I just introduce who we are?
Please.
Okay, well, again, I'm Chris DiMarzo, I'm one of the owners of property, I'm the developer. I have with me Dirk Schneider and Craig Jensen from CJS Architects, a local architect. Thank you for hearing us, appreciate it. I know it's been a while, I know I've requested it a number of times, and I know it's late, and you probably all want to get home and watch Dancing with the Stars, but we'll go as fast as we can get through this.
Right.
I think your question might be answered when they start to really explain what we're doing. And, and we can label it, whatever's the easiest for everybody, we'll be happy to do it so that you understand it, and we can talk about every little piece and recognize it. Very quickly, we've been at this project a long time. Beginning of the year, we said, you know what, clean the slate, let's start over. I started with a new architect. CJS, these two guys are the owners of CJS, just so that you can understand a little bit of their background. Now, I'll go as fast as I can. Dirk lives in the town of Pittsburgh, he's actually the chairman of the town historic preservation board. So he knows this area as well as anybody else, he's on top of it. Craig was the past chairman of the Rochester City Historic Preservation Board. So he knows his historic things too. He was also a trustee of the Landmark Society in Western New York. So not only do they have an appreciation for historic buildings and areas, they're also state-of-the-art architects and can point to a lot of different things they've done. We, we're in front of this board, we will be in front of this board for two things, and, and we've spoken with Mindy. The first thing is the LWRP, we'd like to get that finalized and back up to speed, and then we'll be back in front of you for the site plan revision because, as you can see, the building's changed since our last application. At the beginning of the year, I said, clean slate, I met with these guys. We gave them the parameters from the letter that we received from Hodgson and Russ from February 23rd, which I think this board had some influence in, as well, as well as the other boards. And we followed those parameters as closely as we can. And I think they came up with something that really meets a lot of those criteria and, and will work for everyone. I'll just hit the highlights, okay? The highlights are that we eliminated the fourth floor. It was a big difference. We eliminated the large gable roofs, it took a lot of that mass off. We narrowed the building width, we reduced the number of units. We reduced the building lengths and created a lot more variation in, in the structure and layout. All those changes came up with a 20% decrease in building length, 22% decrease in the height of the buildings, 15% decrease in the footprint, which means more green space, and less onsite parking. These are all things, positive things that were goals of that letter that we meant. Overall, there's a 35% reduction in the mass and scale from where we were to where we are. It's huge, I think, it's a major cut. That's what I want you to remember as we discuss this. This is not where it was before, and you know, I have some pictures to show you as they go through. As I said a few minutes ago, as you know, we've been meeting, we met with the trustees, they were fairly receptive to our ideas. We've had two meetings with the HPB, and I don't know if you've watched them. Okay, so as you know, you know, they, they've been very receptive in working with us on these plans. And as you heard from the last meeting, they're at a point now where they, they all agreed that the mass and scale of the overall project is now acceptable to them. And they told us, and not only that, but the building configuration. And they told us, and not only that, but the building configuration and the layouts of the building are also acceptable to that board. And they were the ones who stopped the project because they said it was too big, because there was too much, what they said, mass and scale. So with this new revision, I need you to know that HDB hasn't voted yet, obviously, but they said we're on the right track and they're comfortable with the size of the building.
With the square, with the cubic footage or actual all the sizes?
Both. They, they specifically said that we met the criteria of 1.8 million cubic feet.
Right.
And they confirmed our analysis. And they said, if you met that, which we did, they're good with it. Yeah, they, they confirmed it. So appreciate your time. If you maybe give these guys five or 10 minutes, they can just explain the buildings and just explain the configuration then. Like to circle back around for why we're here when we're done. And obviously happy to answer any questions and nice to see you ladies. Nice to meet you gentlemen in person. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. So my name's Dirk Schneider. I'm, I've been with the firm since 2001. I'm a principal now and we work on, like Chris was saying, on a lot of history, but also modern architecture. So I think we know, we think we know when to use the right vernacular. And we've studied through the area and the site around and what's across the canal and, and how it fits in. And then we took the letter that was published on February 23rd to heart. And really started more or less, it was a math exercise, of course, just to see, okay, what does that actually mean? And what can we do so we can help with it? It ends up X amount of units, does that still work? And we're really working together hand in hand from the beginning. So then with that, we started. So in this first packet, July 9. Actually, I inserted this one just to kind of show you, we're doing the national solid paint. Right now, we're in the central terminal. So that one wasn't in this. It was in other submissions to the trustees. And I just thought I printed, I printed it out. Here, no, you're rendering right in the, in the back of a, you don't want to show everything right from the beginning. But just to kind of show and start setting up the scale, this is what you would see from Monroe Avenue. And really, we're working on scaling and the massing from the canal side. About 50% of those elevations really along the canal are two stories and the other 50% are three stories. And we're right now developing block up details and, and other areas to make it feel a little bit, or make it more residential and more like a neighborhood and not just a long building that seems to have its back turned to the pedestrian. So that's the level of detail we're working on right now. Here's just an image where we all came from, where this would have looked like. What it looks like right now. Then I hear to our site plan. So originally, I think, as to design stuff, last time, there was even a building right here, Monroe Avenue, really thought it would be nicer to keep this a little bit more of a buffer from Monroe Avenue, that when you come across the bridge, you can, this is a little more of a park setting, and then you can see kind of the development meandered down along the canal. And here you can see now these little recessed terraces and just how it's all matulating itself a little bit with a green space in the middle. These buildings are rotated. Like Chris was saying, they're between 62 and 65 feet wide. Originally, they were much wider in the other concepts. And then with the pitch roof, it just created another level of mass and pushing all surfaces that were just not, not necessary.
So that is page 8 from
Yes. Yes. So then Craig, would you like to maybe just explain, since we heard the building, what, what is the building?
Sure, we can do that. Yeah, I can try and do that. So we've been calling them, you know, and there has been some back and forth of the store about this, but 1, 2, and 3. And so the reason for this is there's underground parking or parking that's partially below grade underneath these buildings, right? So this overall length is parking underneath it, even though what's built on top of that parking is individual structures. So when you look at the way the code classified, the code actually classified this as a single building because the basement is one continuing structure. If you had a taller building, not to get really off track, but if you had a taller building and you were required to build a podium for the building, which is a whole different classification, then you'd have separate structures and separate buildings on top of a podium. But because this is only a three-story structure, you're not required to build a podium and therefore it will be classified as one building.
So the parking underneath is continuous.
That's correct.
But the buildings on top of it are
Right, there are breaks in the building on top of it. It will be classified technically by the building code as one building. But you're right, you will see three individual structures up there that are all part of one building. Now, if you don't like that terminology, we can certainly call it three buildings. But the semantics for this board, that would be different than our application to the building department because it will be classified as one. So we have to decide if you want to have those two different kind of languages going, several things.
And that's why
How are you going to, then, when we're talking about building 1 or building 2, then within those buildings, are we going to talk about like section?
Yeah, so then we would talk about A, B, and C. You know, the last time we had a meeting with the historic review board, I think we actually did a group 1, group 2, and group 3. It was taking the language out of the building code terminology, so there wasn't really a link to the building code terminology. Because if we start to go about buildings, it has a specific meaning, but a group doesn't. So that's when we kind of said, well, this is just a group one, then we could talk about that as, you know.
And then we can go into these pieces in more detail, like the whole, this ensemble as a group.
So I, I think what we're looking for is just a way in which we can identify an individual structure. I'm not trying to tie you to the term building. What we're trying to do is have unique identifiers so that we can have an appropriate record. So the public understands what we're all speaking about. So if you want, so I'm just going to go through real quick, just so we're clear, right? So on your submission to our board, right, on page 9 of 13, you have building 1, which has, within it, building A, building B, and building C. This is your own drawing. Did you see that? Okay, and then on page 10, you have building 2, which again has, according to your own drawings, it uses the term building A, building B, building C, right? And then just moving forward, right, to page, page 11, you have building D. Okay, so again, you use the term building, but I'm not trying to tie you to that in terms of meaning. There are seven unique structures or individual structures. And we'll use the word unique because they certainly aren't unique in my mind.
Right.
But there's seven individual structures. So I think what we're looking for is just a way for us to have an appropriate record. So in building 1, it has A, B, and C, perhaps you can have, you know, 1,000, 2,000, 3,000. In building 2, you have, again, A, B, and C, right? You have 4,000, 5,000, 6,000. And in building 3, which is on page 11, we have 7,000.
Or maybe even just 1A, 1B, 1C, 2A, 2B, 2C.
Yep. And then
We understand what you're saying 100%. We'll clarify.
Over time, as this thing evolves,
Right.
there will be more differentiation between these individual elements. And it will be important to be able to say, oh, this is part of 2B or 1A or whatever.
We understand 100%.
Yeah.
Change that going forward.
We target, you know, as we've kind of been feeling our way and working, you know, we got a border. So we have not probably managed on the right terminology, but I think we can get there.
Thank you, John.
So you want to clarify anything else, Craig?
At this time, I think, you know, as we move the photo review along, you know, some of these issues become clear on that end. But they really don't have to impact our discussions here. I think as long as we get a designation that works for you.
Spend a minute on the, you know, building heights and the roof decks and then all that stuff.
Yeah, so as Dirk was saying too, you know, the idea here is on the canal side to really try and bring the scale down as much as possible. So even though the backside of these buildings is generally three stories, we're varying the front side, you know, I'm going to use the 1A, 1B terminology. So, you know, so in 1A, we might have the two-story portions on the end, the three-story portion in the middle. And then by the time we get to 1B, we'll reverse that. So we have a different kind of configuration on the canal. But as, as Chris was saying, as you walk down the canal, these series of events that are created will continually change, you know. So it won't be just this continuous facade that is, you know, more or less the same height all the way through. We'll really try and vary it up. And then along with, you know, kind of differentiation, differentiation of materials as it moves along, these are just really rough concepts. I mean, you know, as we've developed it further from this, the rendering that Dirk showed, we're starting to figure out how much variety we can really build into this and how we create this level of differentiation to create this, well, differentiation as you go down, you know, so it does become more of a neighborhood, not really building. We don't want you to think about, you know, this building 1 as a building. When you walk down there, you shouldn't necessarily think, oh, this is one building. So think of it as a series of individual events that are a series of buildings that make a neighborhood. And we've been doing this other places as well, where you don't really necessarily think about where the building is. It's more where people are living here and somewhere else.
So right now, we're really working on, the colors that you're seeing in here is really just to help us also develop the massing and the two-story versus three-story. This building here alone that you see right now here is actually two different siding materials. There's another little step. So we're really, after we toured Main Street, kind of as the variety, not necessarily all the color variety, but materials and siding, there is four and a half and six inch chiplats. There is Horton button, then they're all just painted all the same color to blend it all together. There's all kinds of different scoops. So that's now the level of detail that we're starting to overlay onto these to really start even making some of these events even smaller. So when you walk down, you don't walk past 100 foot long buildings, that's the same. You walk along 30 to 50 foot segments of a building that start changing and you start experiencing and, and developing memories of walking along there. So and then on some of these patio or terrace terraces, prioritizing greenery, really just to activate some of these other rooftop areas.
Every time the front building steps down to two stories, it's an opportunity for that back, the back portion of the building, the three-story portion, then to have a terrace out to the front. So it makes those rear units part of the front also, makes them a bit more desirable than the ones in front or the portion.
And then these separations really also came from the desire and from the letter that we received that buildings or function should be longer than, I think, 75 feet and 110 feet. But for having an efficient building, also just internally, and not have all these elevators to make them accessible. We decided to put this together and really play with the materials, but then really create these view sheds in a few areas where you can see all the way through. And in this one, for example, and there's a rendering in the other packet, where we're right now looking at how you would walk through from the parking in the back. And you can walk down to the canal if you park on the, on the far side of the building.
Across the, over the parking and then down to the canal.
So does every apartment face the canal?
No.
A lot of them.
Yeah. Approximately half, a little more than half, I guess, because the two-story, three-story portion will probably face it, and the third story of the back would face it because so, yeah. And I think, you know, the other thing with the segmentation of the building, like they're saying with Main Street, you know, on Main Street and here, some of these perceptual buildings are attached and some are not attached. So it kind of creates this variety. But and that was to meet this building length criteria that was in the letter. But in order to get the cars off the site, we really wanted the parking to be continuous. Because if you don't have a continuous parking structure below, you'd have all these entry points, you have a lot more curb cuts, you have a lot less efficiency. A lot of, a lot more parking on the site as opposed to under the building. So it was really good for us to push as many of these together as possible to free up the site for green space and get the cars frankly out of the view shed.
So what percentage of the cars you can park in this?
Yeah, in this group 1 right now, we have 77 parking spots that we're showing right now, but we're working right now. We will need some utility spaces down there. So we really haven't gotten into that. But I think maybe around 70, so there's
Her question is what percentage? The answer is probably more than 50% of parking will be underground.
And there's still an opportunity for some, you know, garages along the back toward the road or tracks. So even more of that can still be closed. But yeah, I think it will be 50% under the
And right now also, instead of having all these buildings with parking underneath, we really, we're coming in here. And then there's the big garage doors, actually you come in and you turn. So none of these buildings have a big gaping garage doors who really come into here. And then you go under this building and you go left and right. So the garage door down here, originally, the easiest way would have been a big garage door coming from Monroe. But the elevation didn't look that appealing to us. So we really have a garage door coming in a little further down into the space enough. And front here, because we don't have any other roads we need to get into the parking. It's really all nice green space that can be landscaped in front of those buildings now and sidewalks to patios instead of asphalt roads and parking.
I think, you know, one thing to keep in mind as you look at where we are right now is we are still developing the design, right? So that's why we're here, to get input and try and bring you along and get your feedback. Because we're trying to make the right decisions on the conceptual side, on the kind of larger planning moves. And then if we make those correctly, just like we've been doing with this sort of reboard, you know, we kind of get their vibe and then take it to the next level. Now we're doing detailed elevations for them because they have become to the point now where they, I think, feel as though if we can get to that level, we will have, you know, actually be in pretty good shape. Because they've kind of bought in, as I said, to, you know, the overall massing and scale of the project. And then just the overall approach, the project approach.
Yeah, right.
So you're, you're showing building 1 on page 9?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. It is, I guess what you're referring to is building 1, which includes building A, B, and C. Is that all residential?
Yes, except here, this bottom piece is right now slated for possibly commercial use.
And you're pointing to building C on
Building C on the far corner, yes.
Okay. And, and, okay, so then starting with building A of building 1 on page 9, how many units is building A? Number of residential units in building A?
I don't know if I would tell you the number.
I think it's 16. Does that make sense? No, 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 let's wait.
I drew it on my phone.
Let's see, background of your question. I'm just trying to understand in terms of
So they say there's approximately 16.
We have a total right now on the whole project of about 150.
No, it's, it's going to be 22. Because you'd be 24, it could be 12. Yeah.
Yeah, let's not get lost in it.
No, I have 25.
No, I think, I think I'm right. So 1A would be 22 and 1B would also be 22.
Okay, 1B is 22. And then how about 1B? So, sorry, 1A is 22 residential units?
Yes.
Okay, and 1D is
Should be the same.
Should be the same. Okay, and 1C?
No, that one is hard for me to figure out. It should be easier.
Again, instead of us guessing, if you want to know the outcome, when we come back, we'll give you all that detail.
Okay, so and then if we go to page 10 with building 2 on it? How about building A on page 10?
It's going to be, it's going to be the same.
Yes.
They're mirror images, at least in the, in the plan. That will be merged into the facade. That will be merged into a transition facade, yeah.
Okay.
So if you took those, those, you know, one A and B and two B and C, you took twenty-two times four, you're at, you know, eighty-eight, right? And these other ones are like.
Okay, so I guess what I was getting to is I was trying to understand the commonality. So it looks like building A of building one shown on page nine and building A of building two on page ten. Those are common. You mentioned they have common floor plans.
Yes.
Is that right?
Floor plans are the same, yes.
Okay. And so is the same true with building B of building one on page nine is common to building B of building two on page ten?
Yep.
Okay. And then the same thing's true, right? Building C of building one on page nine is common to building C.
That's correct.
Building two.
Floor plans might be similar, but the exterior is really going to change.
Yeah.
So the floor plan versus facade will be very different.
We'll, we'll get to that, right? But the floor plans are identical, right? Okay, so in terms of from the outside, the size of the structure is identical.
Yes.
Okay. And, and so the only change you mentioned so far between, for example, the building A of building one and building A of building two is just the facade, is that right?
Well, there could be balcony, porch, windows, sizes, window hats, window sills. Just like when you look down on Main Street, they're all kind of, they're, they're next to each other, but the window sills and window hats are different.
Same floor plan, so now you're mentioning balconies may be different, so I'm just trying to.
Sure, I mean, just like when you walk down a street, you know, well, even in a village like this, but especially in a more dense urban environment, where you got a series of row houses, the floor plan of many of those houses is exactly the same. You could have twenty rows in a row, the plans would be the same, but the facade would all be different in some neighborhoods, not me, you know.
How about in Pittsburgh Village? Is there a series of twenty-four houses, all the same floor plans, just different facades?
I, I don't think so.
Okay, all right. Okay, so continuing on then, so we talked about, sorry. Okay, we talked about units, what plans are common between, I guess, buildings. No, 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 we'll get there, we'll get there, we'll get there. On building G then, so turning, I guess, sorry, what you call building three, which has some structure on it. Is, is building G all residential?
Yep.
And how many units are in building G? No?
We could calculate it out.
Just like, just like the last time.
Yeah.
I mean, just ballpark.
It's not five thousand and it's not two.
I mean, does it?
Doesn't matter right now with this discussion, we just don't know what these questions are.
Oh, I, I'm just, well, I mean, I think one of the issue, you know, I came here, I heard, you know, reduce the fourth floor, reduce length, reduce structure, reduce units, reduce, 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 reduce. So I think just so I can understand scale, because the only thing I see on this page is a length foam. I'm just trying to get a sense of wrap my head around this.
And we can follow up in writing, so, so we're not guessing and we don't have certain things that are untrue. And then someone's holding a hostage for what we.
Oh, well, certainly not, I mean, these aren't formal plans, right? This is a site language.
But still, we would like to start when it gets, but I know.
Oh, sure.
I'm telling you something on that.
And obviously, as you know, unit count really has no bearing on the size of the building. You're going to have big units, little units.
Yep.
Right, so.
Oh, yeah. So, I mean, what, what do you envision the smallest unit?
One bedroom apartment.
Yep.
Which is, what's that, seven hundred eight and thirteen?
Okay, any other detail that you guys want to describe? Or we're happy to take any questions.
Yeah. I think the general concept is probably understood, so I guess it'd be better to have a.
Right. I think it's amazing the reductions that you were accomplished. I do want to talk about the design because, you know, the LWRP is, you know, kind of guides us to consider how these, how the site fits into the context of the rest of the village. And you kind of think of the rest of the village in terms of Main Street, which I think from what I've observed with the HTP, that has kind of been a focus for, for a couple members. But there's also a shady place. And, and those buildings are anything but kind of uniform in, in height or shape. There's a great deal of variety and that between Main Street and Shane Place, those are kind of the iconic themes of Pittsburgh. Like three entrances into Pittsburgh. You know, that's, that sign, Pittsburgh Village. And then in there, there's a circle with kind of the money shot of Shane Place. And it includes the flower mill, the.
Do you want us to build a high-rise here? Is that what you're trying to say?
As long as it looks like a silent one. Actually. We might get to that, but anyway, so you, you know what I'm, what I'm saying? There's a enormous variety in the, in the buildings, how they look, how they're designed and the materials. And so I can imagine that this, this concept was inspired more by Main Street. The LWRP, we are on this nationally, this national registered treasure. And I'll probably not think that at the moment, but anyway, here we are on the Erie Canal. And where, where's your inspiration from, from what you've referred to as canal vernacular, commercial vernacular? Shown place, where, where do I, where do I see that?
And that's what we're working on right now with these kind of images. And we're actually working on ourselves first in the first package rendering was more contemporary. And now we started going into taking some of these images and silhouettes and technologies and kind of integrating this, but then making it look like it kind of was added on and grew over time, just like you see throughout the village. And tonight you had all these additions and bums and garage that just happened over time. And we're just now, right now trying to create its own. We don't want to be a shared place too, we don't want to be Main Street to where there surely has the MHP Westport crossing. But inspired by some of these other.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm asking for, kind of more inspiration, you know, from the Erie Canal, from, from Shane Place. In terms of, you, you know, back to original findings, you know, there's a certain rhythm that's even established by buildings that are quite different. Because that establishes a feel for the pedestrian, number one, and it establishes abuse, abuse shed from the canal itself. And that's, so when I kind of, I'm glad to see that, where would you envision that?
So this is actually right now coming from Monroe Avenue.
Which right in front.
That's the front of the building, that's what you see.
So when I, when I see this shown place picture on the left, right, I see significant height variation, right? I see kind of like a, a taller-ish, two and a half kind of story building next to a, a flat, a, a flat, you know, singular story structure. You know, when I, when I, when I see the, the proposal here, what I see is a three-floor straight across the top, right? I don't see that height variation.
You will, you will experience that as you move along the canal because it varies from three stories on the front to two stories in the front. You know, as you move along the facade, so you will experience it that way as a continuous three-story building.
Are you, are you talking about the pedestrian experience, walking? So there's also kind of the visual experience of that stand.
Sure. Then you'll, you'll still see all these setbacks, so it'll be more, more complicated, right? Because you almost perceive this as, you know, either multiple buildings or buildings behind buildings. So you'll perceive it more as like a streetscape. You know, it's tough because I, I appreciate what you're saying. You know, shown place has this more wide-ranging variety and that adds a lot of character to that place, right? But other village streets and even Main Street, you know, don't have that level of variety in general in terms of place. The residential speech, because it's just not the topology, right? It's just not kind of, most houses are doing their stories high, right?
Right, and, and so, and residences, you know, there's a certain coherence between the function of the building and, and the, and the look of it. And what Shane Place preserves is the, is the, is the history of, of the canal, of, of the commerce along the canal.
Sure, sure. And we're challenged to reduce the overall mass of the building, which we could have built, or proposed some of these buildings to be four stories and some to be only two stories and create more variation. And I think you could argue that that might in the end be more successful. That's not where we are with this sort of reboard right now. I think they felt as though, you know, the two and the three was enough variation and it brought the overall mass of the development down. We didn't come in and propose any four-story buildings to them.
It was taken off, yeah.
But certainly, yeah, you were, you know, the table at the time of the letter. But I see your argument that some fours and some twos could also be an appropriate solution. It's, it's just not where we are at the moment.
Do the two boards sometimes kind of sit together so the goals align? I know, no, so I'm, I'm sorry, as speaking, being on the town side, I quite often have meetings with the finding board, the two chairs, and we just sit together if a large development comes in. We air all our concerns and then we kind of, so the applicant can get a fair chance and not trying to make visitors happy. And then it comes in front of my work, where did this come from? So, so it wasn't, I didn't mean it negative. It's just that, is there, do you guys have sometimes these meetings so everyone has the same goals? Because ultimately, I think everyone has the village at heart and everyone wants to do the right thing. But it would be good if.
Frankly, this is the only project that would have required, you know, kind of that level.
You know, to answer John's question, I think, I understand what you're saying. And don't forget what you're looking at, you're looking at a scale that, I don't even know what it is. It, it's a massing study, but the scale is so small. Yeah, on those drawings, the scale is so small that I can see what you're saying. It looks like it's, you know, one level. When, when they start to get into, you know, the detail which they're working on now and in a different format, this is a Revit format or a CAD kind of format. You really see the detail as we go forward. And I think you'll start to see more of the various.
And you're working right now on the stair towers that are, for example, in the back, some of the search and justice anyways are working on details and taller elements like you would see in canal towns where the shaft with a, with a hoistway was taller. And so right now we're working those details and just the next level of oomph to make it feel Pittsburgh or at least canal and not development.
What's wrong with, you know, Pittsburgh and canal? We want this, this is such a great opportunity to kind of, you know, be another emblem, you know, of Pittsburgh that, you know, contains, that at least reflects the canal and, and Main Street.
And that's, you know, that's one of the things that Historic Preservation Board challenges with too, that, okay, they like the approach, but how do we make sure this approach in the end really delivers Pittsburgh's solution instead of a solution that maybe is, you know, could be seen in other parts of the country.
I didn't get the whole voicemail.
Well, I mean, if you travel, certainly you can see that, you know, there is a kind of modern vernacular kind of aesthetic to some current developments that is maybe applicable, it appears in all different places, right?
So what this, what this won't be, what the HPP was fearing was a flat building with just different facades on the front and a building that has the same footprint just flipped and then flipped again. This will not be that. This is a very, very expensive, complicated building with a lot of variation, live roof decks and canopies and, you know.
Five-foot steps, so it looks like really another building coming in and out of it, not just the material thickness that it's changing.
So maybe that's the detail that's missing because.
Absolutely, it's not there.
I, I think what, what, certainly what I'm saying is, is building one, building two being very images of each other and the facade being changed with a few different colors. And at the end of the day, it's a continuous three-story structure that looks, you know, just a big, monotonous block, right?
Good concern, let us, let us take.
Yeah, I don't think that will be at all where we end up. I mean, it's just like, you know, many houses on any street. The floor plans don't always change that much because there's certain floor plans, the center entrance, the side entrance, you know. But then once you get past that, the houses are incredibly different because you start to make these minor variations that end up actually turning out to be major variations by the time you go all the way down the street. But it's not like, you know, there are only a certain, there's only a certain number of floor plans that generally are what people builds, you know, in the last century.
So I, I think the biggest difference between Pittsburgh Village and the town of Pittsburgh is that, you know, the houses in Pittsburgh Village have been built throughout a long period of time and they're not the same, right? They're not a cookie cutter builder project. And so that's, that's what we're running into, right? It's, it's, you know, you keep saying that floor plans don't change. I, I guess I would just disagree. I think it's, I think probably the house, the houses in Pittsburgh Village that were built through a variety of different time periods are much different. And so I think it's that, you know, variety and difference of structure that is something that's missing. And I, I get your point, right, that this is, you know, it's small scale, tough to see. But I think that's something that, you know, I, I would think needs to be emphasized.
But if you look at, you know, Greek revival house or Italian made house or just a colonial house, the floor plans in most of those houses didn't, didn't change. I mean, like I said, there are different technologies, though, if there's a center entrance or a side entrance, but they're nothing different.
Well, I think that, that's the, what we're trying to do here, again, back to what Susan was saying, is bring in elements from different aspects of the village. The single family comparison is not really what we're comparing to. We're really comparing to canal commercial buildings, which are big warehouse buildings. That's what they are. And that was our precedent, many of them. And I can bring in hundreds of precedent.
And those can be very big.
So it's all, I remember those actually from the first presentation. But let's just, this is Pittsburgh. There's, and there's shown place. And I, before I forget it, because I really loved it from your website, when you, I think this was kind of one of your overarching motivations with your preservation work to memorialize history through architecture. I love that quote, so, so, so do that.
A couple of things. Everybody's doing great and chiming in because you guys. Just a couple of things. One, this goes back to the beginning. You were originally charged in being given a letter by Mr. Gamarzo, the, the construct by which you have to work with. At the time that you received that letter, did you also receive a copy of the LWRP?
I don't know, I think I heard about it.
We discussed it, but I didn't give them a copy.
Or actually the findings.
The second, we're going over the findings now.
Have you, have you read the findings from April fifteen?
Yeah, we're going over that today.
Today you're going over that.
Yeah.
If, if I'm not mistaken, the letter that was sent to us, sorry, I don't have the date. It asked us to address the concerns raised at HTP's previous LWR findings. I would find it troubling if you just were referring to them today. That being said, from these findings, I have a number of. That being said, from these findings, I have a number of questions or just comments I'd like to ask. So the first one was with regards to reading the minutes from the two thousand and nineteen findings. The second one is, in the LWRP, section three, page three, it states, "The overall design of new construction should enhance the character of the community and canal and contribute to, not detract from, a unified and memorable Pittsburgh identity." It was just three or four minutes ago, I believe, or maybe ten minutes ago. I believe one of you may have mentioned that you didn't want to recreate shown place. You wanted to be Westport Crossing. The LWRP specifically states the opposite. The second is, could you express how your project incorporates that statement? And I'll just skip ahead because I don't believe it does. So I'm going to go to my next question. Along Monroe Avenue, the location of the project will be highly visible from one of the most trafficked gateways in the village. In the context of the LWRP, what responsibilities do you have in your project design to convey to visitors and travelers that they are now entering a historic canal side village open for common?
Well, I would ask you the same question. I mean, that's, that's, uh, that you need to understand, uh, we're, we're trying to bring a lot of things together, right? And we've been at this a long time. There's a lot of history here, we won't go all the way back. But, you know, we're, we're trying to incorporate what was approved in the special permit. Well, let's go back, what was approved in the R five zone? Because this is the only zone in the whole village that has these criteria. Approved in the special permit, approved in the, in the final site plan approval and tie it all together. Need I remind you that the LWRP was already approved three times in the R five, in the special permit, and again by the planning board? And so we're trying to tie a lot together here and we're trying to bring it back. What we came to today is that we started from scratch. We reduced where we were significantly. And the biggest item of all those things that were denied last time, there were three things that were denied. Well, basically that was too big, too massive and, and, uh, too big for, 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 for the area. And so we came back with a much smaller project. That's where we are. We're happy to, you know, give the specific questions to answer them. The, these architects aren't prepared to answer those out now, neither am I. We came today just to present the overall concept to you and, and move forward from there.
Chris, I, I think that, you know, just a couple of things here. Um, what Dave is pointing out is that this board is really very concerned about the criteria that are set forth in the LWRP. And I would disagree with you about saying that it was approved three times because Judge Art disagreed with you and that's now an appeal to the fourth department. You know, there is no LWRP with Eastport Crossing. I know that you're trying very hard to satisfy the HPV's concerns about mass and scale. This board, in addition to the concerns about mass and scale, also had the concerns related to the LWRP review, which is what Dave is getting at and which was set forth in, you know, the detailed finding statements that are in connection with the review that it's, that it's done twice. So, you know, I think that there's, I can understand a little bit of disappointment here when, you know, the board is hearing that we haven't really started to integrate their concerns about the LWRP issues into the concept of the design for this project.
Well, that's not what we said. In making things smaller and, and creating a design that fits, those issues will pan out, is my belief. But Dave, tell me what you want to see, what, what are you looking for? I mean, what, what, what meets those criteria? I don't know.
I just wanted to actually add real quick. So when you come into the village right now over the bridge, you see a gas station, you see a Taliban's and you see an office park that is also not, none of those three items are historic. I think our filter that is actually now before this, everything that we're exploring actually will dress up your approach to the village a lot more and your focus will be on something else, a gas station and an office park that I think would have a right to respect down. So I think, I think our buildings are helping the village to create another nicer entry point from that side. And then when you leave right across, you have all the town buildings and, uh, sort of, I mean, one of those, I think the constraint of where our building site is and what's the surrounding neighborhood, even though it's not in the village across the canal, is still part of the context of where our site is. And I think we, if we just ignore this and a big base, uh, football field behind it with floodlights. And I think when you approach the village now with what we're doing with the buildings and now starting to look into the detailing for other historic buildings, it will be a much better approach than what you have or what it looked like in nineteen eighty four. So, um, and I was glad to hear from the historic preservation board also that they did not want an appetite. They don't just want a facade applied to something to make it look like faith. So I think that's, that, I think those are the things that I see, well, how we're making that entrance a lot better than what it is.
In revisiting number three, your feedback would be that in the context of the LWRP, you believe you're working towards facades and integrations that would be a more welcoming character of the village as you come across Monroe. Not in comparison to what we've done before, or what we thought we had before, or the other buildings around it, but rather the opportunity for you to create a visual entrance that supports the historic character and nature and development in the village.
Correct, yes.
Any comments before, maybe I throw a few more questions out there?
Well, go for it.
In what way was the proposed concept plan crafted in accordance with the existing historical patterns of the village of Pittsburgh?
Yes, again, I think that.
Do we need materiality and textures and typologies?
More of a pattern of development in terms of the placement of the buildings.
Yeah, so we, so you have different patterns in different places, right? So obviously your Main Street pattern is very different than your neighborhood pattern is very different than your shown place pattern, right?
What kind of pattern would you envision to be what you're looking to mirror or thoughtfully like? Uh, position or reference on this property?
So I don't think you can take any one of those and say it's going to be the solution because Main Street is a commercial district. It operates in a certain way because it's commercial, it's not residential. And the same thing could be said about your residential district or your, you know, shown place area. They all have different patterns because they're different character. And this one, because it's residential on the canal, is something that you don't have. I mean, so in a sense, it's going to be its own thing.
I understand your view.
And that's okay.
In reference to that, you often have historical commercial buildings that are repurposed in their unique placement along canal. For example, you referenced the warehouses across the street.
And, and your own terrific work.
So the, the question is, is, is this a interpretation of a residential development of a refurbished or recreated commercial district? Or is this, um, your envisionment of a residential district completely new and distinct and different? With the idea of, uh, are there other areas within the village similar to the uniformity in design, size and scale and massing of the buildings across the property?
This is the only zone in the village that's zoned R five. So it, it has different parameters than anywhere else.
Simply being a single zone doesn't necessarily imply size and scale and a uniformity of design across an entire zone. Question, another question. How would you characterize the effect of this development on the existing view shed from the canal, Monroe Avenue and Southern Streets?
This was the existing view shed.
We're looking at today.
Well, let's say that as a precedent, this was the existing view shed. And I spent six million dollars cleaning this mess up.
Respectfully, I.
And for, not only for myself, but for the village and, and town and surrounding area. And so, uh, let's not forget that there are dozen to twenty trains a day that go by this site, which is a pretty ugly view shed. So my answer is that the view shed will only be enhanced by what we're building compared to this and what's there today, which is dirt.
So in many respects to that comment, you would like us to certainly reflect back on what it was rather than start renewing how these buildings might interreference with the other view sheds that exist as though there was nothing on the property. So, yeah, I was confused myself. But right, right now you have, I mean, you're showing us a picture of the old office site. Clearly the view shed today is better. And you would ask us, as we think on the view shed with respect to the LWRP objectives, that we consider it relative to what it was rather as, rather than as the flat ground is.
Yeah, I would say so. And, and you know, this, the LWRP, uh, you know, really should have been done when we got the R five zone, which, which I, it was, we tried to incorporate it. But at that time, you know, it was a zoning change. Not, not, not a LWRP compared to the exact, you know, building designs. So my answer to your question is yes.
And I respect that, compared to how we think on the LWRP as a governing document today may differ based on our past. So in trying to, or we're tasked with the idea of looking at this LWRP and making sure that what will be built is consistent with the objectives and the goals of the LWRP. So I just want to continue on for a moment with regards to prior findings. In section three, page four, it states that larger structures should be broken up into smaller, more pedestrian scale structures, which relate better to the existing streetscape. Any thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I think that's exactly what we're trying to do. There's not so much a streetscape there, but canalscape if you want, or whatever you want to call them. I guess we'll have a, a new street there that will be dedicated to streets.
Would you consider these buildings to be smaller and more pedestrian scaled?
Then what? Sure, that the whole intent is that they need pedestrian scale. I mean, we did look at the, the buildings across the canal, like Dirk said, that are some cases five hundred feet long. And, you know, that's a topology too, that you could say, hey, that's appropriate for the canal, they're industrial buildings, they kind of.
Buildings across the canal in Pittsburgh Village?
No, no, then I mentioned that earlier that they're not, but they're part of the neighborhood, so thank you. I mean, you know, that, I think they're still part of the environment, we can't deny that they're there. Right. You know, the village might have a hard line, but the canal.
That's in strict scale, and these guys can correct me. From my understanding, it really means most of the time that, you know, windows are, you know, five feet tall. Doors are six foot eight, that's a pedestrian scale of the building. The, the, this door is not a ten foot high door, that wouldn't be pedestrian scale.
But it's also, of course, I think, you know, as you walk along the building, that there's a certain cadence to the architecture that is in tune with a pedestrian rather than a motor vehicle, right? Because, you know, you walk along a five hundred foot long building, it gets bananas pretty quickly and it doesn't really give you a lot of, uh, reason to walk there, right? So we're trying to give people reasons to, you know, walk. There's a lot of energy or potential energy that these buildings convey, right? Entrances, doors, torches, things that at least speak to how the building interacts with you. And, you know, a long building doesn't have that generally because it has one use for five hundred feet.
But I think what we're seeing here is like a repeat, right? So, you know, building one and what you call building two, right? Which are each three structures, I guess you could say, right there, it's, it's the same being repeated, right?
I mean, to be fair though, when you walk, walk, walk along a village street and you see porch, 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 is that a problem? I, I don't understand your hang up with the idea.
It's not the exact same force, the exact same force.
Neither will this be though.
Then I guess it's more, the more detail that we need to see.
Okay.
Because, because I, I mean, it's, I mean, truly, when you hold building one next to building two, really, it's just a mirror image.
Right, that's exactly what it is right now. In the massing study, that's exactly what it is.
Yeah, okay.
You understand that the purpose of that at that time was just to discuss the massing of the length of building.
Yeah, and I, I would.
There's not a lot of architecture detail on that.
Sure, and you have buildings that are, I mean, a hundred and sixty eight foot long and the next building is a hundred and sixty foot, sixty eight feet long, sixty feet, one sixty eight, one sixty eight, sixty feet. Football field, just that one after the other, right? I mean, I think the third building, um, third building, I mean, it's football.
No, the football field is right up, up here. Our building, group one and two, each are football field with a, with a form, uh, with a track around it. The last one is not a football field.
It's two hundred and fifty eight feet, so I, I showed you forty, sorry.
So what, what, what you're saying is that you think, you're, you're, you're making the point that this is repetitive and just repeating and just monotonous, is that where you're going?
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm hoping to see, you know, right? I think whether you walk down Main Street or whether you walk down shown place, you, you, you see, you see a lot of differences, right? You know, I think even, you know, with the inspiration right here, um, right? One of those barn structures down in shown place, right? Th- this isn't, this, there's not twenty of these in a row, right? There's a barn structure and then, right, there's a tall tower, then there's, you know, then there's the great, right? Breweries on the water that got built, right? That all adds to, I think, the canal, I guess, if you want to call it canalscape. And even in, even on Main Street, right? Not everything is, you know, just three stories straight across the top, right? There's differences, there are spaces between buildings, right? There may be a fifty foot building, then a forty foot building, then something very small. And I think when you take all that together, right? What you see are differences, differences in landscape, differences in buildings we can deal. And, uh, you know, I totally get your point. I know you keep saying this was, you know, just, just for purposes of mass, but, I mean, setting that aside, it's all pretty much the same and I think that's.
Totally disagree.
Then, 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 then I hope you can, then I hope you can present something more that shows those differences.
I think we can, yeah, I think we can, yeah.
Because, because of, of right now, it's, you know, one sixty eight, one sixty eight, sixty, one sixty eight, one sixty eight, sixty. Yeah, it's, it's the same. So, you know, that's, that's why I mentioned, right? Whether it's Main Street or the canal, there's no continuity, right? There's the differences. My connection, yeah, and, and look, I, you know, this isn't, you know, this isn't sit here and read up on you guys all day long. You know, I looked at you guys' website, you, from what I can see from the website, you've done some fantastic work. So, you know, I think it's something where, you know, hopefully we can convert, right? And see some great, some, you know, those differences.
Yes.
Um, the one thing I would like to ask though, since you guys are here, on, uh, in terms of projects, um, you guys have, you know, put forward, you know, CJS, um, is there something you can, like, the public can look at that is a canal or some kind of, um, waterway property that you've often asked that, you know, the public can look at?
We haven't built anything along the canal, we've only restored something.
Along, along the Buffalo River, we did, um, on Ohio Street, we did one, two, three buildings and the Roman Club in the middle. So, I mean, those are all, and we could put a few links together and actually have a link sent out just to those, uh, projects.
You know, for the project, I mean, it's, it's all public people.
Yeah, I mean, the, the problem is, you know, just like this project, those projects had very specific kind of, uh, reasons why they developed the way they did. So there's this big project, Buffalo River, Buffalo River Landing that we did. Unless you know the history of the site, you won't understand why this building looks the way it does. It was, there was a giant warehouse on this site that has, that had fallen down, was condemned. You wanted to save it, it couldn't be saved. The developer got permission to tear it down because it was collapsing in on itself. And the building is made out of weathering steel and it's a very big. But it's that way because of this warehouse, you know, and it's not pedestrian friendly.
No.
Uh, but there's no canal path and it's really because of this warehouse was there that generated the whole, you know, reason for it to be what it is.
I, I wasn't trying to draw similarity, I was just trying to bring you a bone. So the public can understand that you guys are from a reputable architectural shop and that you've done work on waterways before and that while the requirements are different, that this is something that you guys can push through and it's really just, uh, right?
Yeah, and, and I think what Craig was saying, I think, um, none of our projects, right? We haven't done a, we're not doing pen, water, run villages because we're the waterfront village people. I think we're, we're, we're good in what we do because we look at something and then really be able to extract things out of it and create something that is now. But like you said, the frames and the website, but then also lean on, 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 on history without replicating it. And I mentioned it before, I'm glad that Historic Preservation Board is worried that we're, to appease everyone that we're creating and. To appease everyone that we're creating a nap pad that also would be fair to the other historic.
We do have to find a way to get you and the Preservation Board on the same page because, for example, building. Three that we're developing, their concern was that their building was. Too big and they want us to break it down into smaller pieces. One of the reasons it was bigger in our initial concept was. Because it was time for some variety, right? If you have all these little buildings, you need something that's different again, just to your point of. Maybe there should be a four story building. Now, again, we didn't do four stories because the latter said, no four story buildings. But you could argue that more variety, even if it's bigger, is a good thing. But there's got to be some sort of consensus formed at some point, whether that's the approach, which could be successful. Or whether the approach we're currently on is more successful, which I I think can still work. I'm not saying either one of these is is not a solution.
Or mutually.
They're right, exactly right. I don't think they necessarily are. But if somebody else thinks they are, we figure that out the better, obviously.
One of the challenges, of course, is buildings that have quite a bit of, you know. Um, continuity or congruence with each other, but not necessarily with the surrounding historic village. And to the extent that you can incorporate some of these structural elements that you referenced in other properties that you've built, or even. Think to try to exaggerate, uh, one building at the expense of other buildings. Whether or not you create horseshoe, you know, like a horseshoe effect at the at the back end of it, at the the southern, well, southwest side. And create possibly an amplifier for the public to engage in in ways that, like, how do you bring it all together? When you look at the property at an aerial view, you think, wow, that's a lot of unique different places that I want to go be and experience. Maybe in a couple of them, maybe, you know, the the commercial or the coffee type shops. Because in my mind, I think of it this way. I live in this village for a particular reason. It's historic, it's got character, it's got consistency, and I feel it through. You've probably been down to Chautauqua Institute. You're not building a property on Chautauqua Institute. But nonetheless, if one were to think in Chautauqua, there are buildings of significant size, for example, the hotel. That is uniquely appropriate for a historic charm and character. And around it are other properties and and ways and experiences that people want to go and envision and experience.
We're trying to save the amphitheater that we're in, successful in Chautauqua.
So one of the things, I I have a comment here, and it speaks a little bit to your comment on being on the same page. And it's because the LWRP is a unique governing document that asks for a lot. With the creativity that you can bring forward, whether or not if you build it, bring in buildings straight to the canal front or a certain element. You know, back in some up creating corners and juxtapositions within the property, that that visual line. You think this is something that we don't want it to be westport crossing. We want it to be the way the village thinks of itself within the construct of the entire canal. Because fifty years from now, we are going to be bigger. I don't know how. Redevelopment of the pickle factory, redevelopment behind Shane Place. There are things that are going to be happening, just urban density, with density aside, right, population. So what in my mind I think about is this LWRP is trying to create a plan by which when we build and construct new buildings. It is scalable with continuity throughout the entire historic village. And so in a way, think of it as the opportunity to become the basis of that by which other people will want to emulate and repeat. Possibly, you know, there are other properties throughout that. You just think about, say, okay, how can this be a vision for that future, right? I'm not. Concerned as much about size and scale as much as it is, how do you incorporate all that throughout that entire property? So I have another thing that I just want to read. In the LWRP, we're tasked with balancing many different stated objectives. The document offers some flexibility for interpretation, but it is very clear and consistent with the overall messaging. As you reflect on the different parameters you perceive from each board, understand that opportunities exist to share unique concept considerations. That may not so easily fall within those guidelines, but yet still be considered consistent with the LWRP. That references, right, for example, height, right, positioning. And other elements that if it is inspiring. I think there is flexibility on just the letter you've received. We're not saying go add more units. We're not saying go add more square footage. But to Susan's point, that little circle when you come in at Pittsburgh, it's got the grain silo, right? How many stories is that? I'm not saying repeated.
Right.
But you have, there are unique ways to have this be something that becomes a part, not distinctly different. But a part of the historic character of this village, right? And that's what I think the LWRP is asking.
Yeah, so I don't know if you know, uh, neighborhood, uh, downtown Rochester, uh. The, well, of course, I know a lot of the names, but. So cultural districts, Southern Street area, you know, New Grove Town, I don't know any of those names. If you ever walked down that section of Gibb Street or Southern Street or Windsor Street.
You're talking behind the YMCA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very, this is really wonderful community of development that's.
So so we did all all that new development. The only one we didn't do was along University Avenue that was done maybe. I don't know, six years ago or something like that, but all the ones themselves are on Gibbs. Or on Windsor, we did, right? And they don't match the existing architecture that's in the neighborhood, right? So the historic district, you know, preservation district, and all those houses have, you know, they're Victorian or they're, you know, other styles. And none of the new stuff is a match for that. We don't follow any of the details. We basically take. Cues from those older structures and try and make new structures that are sympathetic in terms of scale and portion and. You know, the kind of pedestrian quality of the neighborhood and make it all work. And I think, you know, that's what this can do too. We don't want to replicate anything you've got, because if we do, we're going to diminish what you have. And we're not going to be successful because we probably can't do Shown Place as good as they did.
I mean, I I think from my point of view, what is so meaningful would be variety. Um, variety in height, variety in siding, variety. Um, architectural details, um, he, uh, you you know, and I, I, I mean, how would. You know, kind of these wonderful buildings ever be built with like planning boards like.
But I I respect your your point of view, and I think variety certainly could make a good solution. But you go to a lot of really successful places and the variety exists on more of a detail level. And there's a certain level of consistency that exists to make. A community feel like it all comes together, right? So if you walk through more a more urban condition. Or even a successful playing community like, I don't know, you know, Seaside, Florida, it's a playing community down.
Yeah, this is certainly not Seaside.
And also your point.
Do you understand that, you know, how that place evolved? And, you know, how simple the code is that generates those buildings, which were all designed by different people, but are not designed by a single person.
But I think when we talk about variety, um, right, it's not, it's. It's not just size and shape, which I think is important, right? But it's also, right, you go down Shown Place, does every building look like it was built in the same time period? It doesn't, right? When you go down Main Street, you know, does everything look like it was built in the same period? No, it doesn't, right? There's clusters that look similar, but right, there's there's mismatch, right? You know, you look at this, right? Setting aside, I think, you know, the repeating factor, right, it's. It all looks like we built in the same time period, right? It's the same exact architectural style, the same exact building materials, right? I've seen what you've done with like offsetting colors and some materials, but those materials repeat to all the buildings, right? Um, so I think that's also another avenue to, right, have variation. You know.
The strike of balance between, I appreciate what you're saying, but you also, like Dirk said, you don't want to create. Uh, Disneyland either, you know what I'm saying? So you got to be a little careful that it doesn't look. Like you're just making this stuff up.
Sure.
No, it's gotta be, it needs to be referential.
It feels like it's, you know, true to itself as opposed to just trying to do everything for everybody else.
To John's point earlier, the nice barn image that you have there is possibly the street side from the row. If you were arguing that ten times over.
Yeah.
But one other comment, and I don't know if anybody else might have a thought on this, but, um, this was in the findings. That the New York State Office of Parks and Recreation's historic preservation guidelines for new construction. Recommend that any new construction be within ten percent of the scale of historical problems. Put it out there. And then I have.
Yeah, so, go ahead. As I said before, there are a lot of parameters we're trying to, a lot of boxes we're trying to fit in. Shippo can make recommendations about a lot of things. Historical precedence on this site is this. I don't think that what, they don't want us to be ten percent of this, I don't think. It's so, um, it's. I don't know what your point is from.
I might disagree with you on what your reference site is, obviously, and take you down to Monaco site. You're not looking to rebuild something that looks like Monaco.
Right.
You're an extension of the Pittsburgh Village, as a historic village. I'll just offer one other comment and then I'm probably done for the night. So imagine being on a canal by boat, bicycle, or foot and rounding the bend as you head east into the village of Pittsburgh. Do you believe this proposed project does well to express the historic pattern and development charm and character of the village? Does it provide at least a glimpse or shell of a community's character which lies beyond? Or is it in sharp contrast to the historic patterns of development for residential or commercial development? Upon departure, then heading east as you leave, would those same passerby's have just one? Or when they have two versions of Pittsburgh's character, the historic Shane Place juxtaposed against the proposed development?
Got a question or statement?
Yes, the statements, I know.
And again, Dave, you know, uh. You made a lot of great comments today, and I think that we're we're refining it. It's because they're hearing what what you're saying. Because as they get into the detail, I think in their mind, and I'll force them to get these details in. Um, all under the pretense that we have a lot of. A lot of parameters that we need to fit into to make this actually work and be viable. For example. You know, these buildings are linear in some respect so that we can get the parking underneath the buildings. Because one of the parameters that we're trying to follow is that we don't want parking all on the outside. So if you do, you know, if you take the buildings and you make a horseshoe shape in some respect, uh, you know, you can't get the parking in that way. And, um.
Does underground parking need a building on top?
Yes.
I I that was just a, I I don't know the.
Yeah, it could be at all practical with this. I mean, it doesn't have to, but the cost of building without the building is problematic.
This. No, this is a long, narrow site. The site dictates that these are going to be long, narrow kind of configuration in some respect. Within those parameters, we're going to do the best we can to to get that feel. That you're looking for and that I want to build. I mean, you need to hear from me, Dave, that I want to make this a gorgeous, gorgeous development that people want to live in. If they want to live in it, it's going to show wealth for the village and surround.
One idea to think about, um, so two thoughts. One is, anything that may provide residential experience. Where not just going to Shane Place, but going down to the new development creates opportunities, not in competition with, but. Um, as a complement to all those things that we already have. Be careful not to, for one reason or another, boot them out. So I I think, for example, an amplifier. If you took one of these flat facades of the building and you created the opportunity for, like, projector movie engagements with the community on various occasions. Things like that, where you're bringing people in. Again, the LWRP is a weighing station. You have these different objectives. Sometimes some are going to be successful or consistent, sometimes some are going to be inconsistent. And we have to consider all that in connection with each other, right? So the more of opportunities for resident engagement and things along those lines, I think it's, uh, of interest. Uh, the other one would be, and this goes speaks to the idea of building a great project. As you think about the old barns on Shane Place, right, it's a. With unlimited money, and I know that is not the case here, um, but those old barns can be an architect's dream. Right? What might you do with them? How could you re-envision them? How do you use them? Again, we're not talking about an unlimited budget or unlimited resources. But the idea is, how can we take the ideas and the facades and the structures of old? And create these amazing places that people want to go to in addition to some of the opportunities for residential. Um, experience or residential housing. How how can you bring that all together, right?
Right, yeah, I think that's exactly what we're trying to do. So I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to do that.
And I I also want to, uh. Say thank you. And we want to build something. We really look forward to working together. And I think, uh, you know, this has been, from my point of view, very productive. Um, thanks for that opportunity too.
You're welcome. I I agree. I mean, building something's important. I mean, you know, maybe not everyone agrees, but. It's the responsible thing to do, you know?
Yeah.
Building villages is a lot better than building out in greenfield somewhere, you know? And if you don't build a place like this, it diminishes a lot more than a brown tree, you know, I mean, so, yeah.
Building something is better than a dirt patch. So I think we're all in this, uh, that we'd like to see something built, right? It's just that, you know, and I think we'd like to see something built sooner rather than later. It's just the balancing, right? Um, you know, I think, you know, our LWRP is a public document. I know it's lengthy, but. It details out what the village, you know, puts at the forefront of, you know, construction like this, right? So I think that's just where we got to come together.
So then, I mean, is there is there a chance, and I know we go about this, I mean, to have a workshop with your board and the Historic Preservation Board, so. We're all in the same room together and we can all, I I don't know if that's even allowed or I'm I'm just asking.
No, from from where we sit, we're going one direction with them and and we're hearing slightly different things from from you guys. And we can't go this way.
Yep.
Uh.
Like I said.
I think I think what will happen, what we're doing next is they're they're taking this first building and they're getting it right into detail. And I think that, uh, once that is completed, we're going to, we're going to meet with the HPV. If you can come to that meeting or we'll have another meeting with you to present at that stage, so you can kind of see the direction that we're heading. Uh, I would appreciate that that we could sit with you again in in the next few weeks. Uh, and and bring you along with us, because I don't want to go down the road. I I'm not going to design this whole building and say that it's not what we wanted, right?
Ponder the ideas of creativity, is placement and uniformity or the absence thereof. How do you deal with different things? Um, and if you want to pause your conversations with the HPV to focus on us, and if we start to come to an agreement, go back to them. Or you want to continue down with the HPV, I don't know if it would be productive yet at this time to meet with both of us, but.
Let 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 us just let us figure that out. Yeah, but let let us figure that out. But I I think, I think the most important thing really, honestly, is consistency and submissions, right? I think, you know, we want to see the same thing that's being submitted to the HPV, because I don't think it makes any sense for us to discuss. You know, Rev A of a document and the HPV on, you know, Rev L, right? I just, you know, we need to be seeing the same documents, but at the end of the day, right? I think most important to you, Chris, is that you get the same thing approved from TCB and HPV, right? Um, so I think that's where really, you know, I know we, you know, we got off a little rocky at the start, but. That's why we, you know, that's why we want unique identifiers. We'd like to see the same documentation. Because, you know, in the in the two packets, there is a slight.
Yeah.
Some slight difference in some of the buildings, and we picked up on that. There was no reason for us to, you know, talk about the thirty minutes here today, but. Again, like, we just, we need to see the same thing, so we're talking about the same thing, right?
And and I think it's because I think, right, we're trying to bring everyone along. So I think you're seeing, you're seeing the growth and the change. And I think, because this is a big complex project and. Like Chris said, we could just design it and say, take it or leave it, but I don't think. It's too important for everyone that we just force something on someone. I think it needs to be a team effort. And that's why I think, uh, we appreciate your talent. And you see the growth and changes in nomenclature and, uh, just. You're getting a little glimpse into our brain, which is sometimes crazy.
And the other way around too, right?
Yeah, and you have to deal with two new people.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much.
I really appreciate it.
Susan, you get to close them in?
Uh, yes, I will make that, no, I'm kidding. That gets, uh, ten, ten, um, we bring this meeting of twentieth of September, we're closed, we have a second.
I'll second the close.
I'm good.
Hi.
Hi.
Author, whatever, as we move forward and we get to a point where we make this next submission to the HPB, what's the best method to get a meeting scheduled with this board?
Uh, we're going to chat about that.
Because we tried to get it in at the submission date, and I know that that's the most important thing a lot of the times. Uh, but, you know, we weren't communicating well, and seems like we collapsed a month.
Uh, y- y- you know, some are, uh-
Yeah, I, I know everyone's busy, but I'm just, I guess my question is, what's the best way for us to do that when we get to a point to submit something? Do, do I send an email to you, to the attorney, to the board as a whole? Because obviously you're not the, right, full-time chairman, so-
Uh, I, I think in this regard, yes, send it, send it to all of us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure Marina is in it.
And Marina's documents, yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you, thanks for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we're best dancing with the stars.